Good afternoon, everyone. A special meeting of the Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the Clerk, please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Schneer, Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And I expect Councilmember Hanson momentarily, but Councilmember Warren will be absent this evening.
Okay. Would everyone rise? Vice Mayor Getup, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge, aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, good afternoon to everyone and welcome. It's good we have packed chambers here to discuss and potentially act on a number of very important issues. The one discussion item which we will get to as soon as we finish the consent calendar are proposed ordinance revisions relating to tobacco retailers. We will get to that. In the meantime, on the consent calendar, there is what is called in the city vernacular a pass for publication item relating to residential rental mediation programs, which I know a lot of people are here tonight. And you are welcome, and you're welcome to testify. But I just want to say to you that there will be no action, if you will, on the item tonight. Pass for publication is essentially a, what we call a ministerial function, is just a formality that's necessary under the law for us to be able to agendize this item for actual hearing and debate and potential action next week. So we have 19 people signed up on the issue, and as they say, you're welcome to testify this weekend, next week, although if you chose to testify next week, that would be okay too. Hint, hint. There we go. All right. So that's the way that it is. Here we go. So let's begin with the consent calendar. I would take a motion and a second on the consent calendar. Moved and seconded, now let's hear from, yes, Councilmember Schneer.
Could I suggest, just because I know we have staff on the other three items, that we dispose of those and then go to the...
Well, that's good. Good idea. Okay. So Items 2, 3, and 4, why don't we take a friendly amendment to move Items 2, 3, and 4, seconded by Councilman Carr? There's no testimony on those items. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. 2, 3, and 4 passed unanimously. Now we go to 1, which again, a vote yes is not necessarily for or against the item. It is what's called a pass for publication. But there are 19 people who want to speak on the item, and of course, this is your chambers. So let's go. Two minutes, two minutes apiece is the rule, and we're going to keep regular order here tonight and hold that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to remind folks that this meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. Members who wish to address the council should come into speaker slip, which can be found at the back of the room. Speaker slips do need to be turned in prior to the beginning of each item. This item number one has begun. Please fully complete the speaker slip with name and any phonetic clarification and preferred pronoun so that everyone has the opportunity to address the council. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. The council rules of procedure outlined in decorum are expected in the chamber and can be found on our website, copies at the back of the room, and is summarized on the back of the speaker slip. For instance, use of swear words, yelling from the audience, physically threatening conduct, and displays of disrespect are discouraged. The presiding officer will request that a person cease disruptive conduct, and if not immediately stopped, the presiding officer will direct the person to leave the council meeting. Each speaker has two minutes to address the council. Please silence your cell phones or any other communication devices, and refrain from using flash photography or lights on video equipment. An cordless microphone, assisted listening device, and parking validations are available from the Clerk. As the mayor said, I have 19 speakers. The first is Ciara Harpster, Bobby Dalton G. Roy, and then Chrissy Correa. Ciara Harpster.
You could line up too, please, as the Clerk calls your names so that we can move expeditiously, which we appreciate it. Thank you.
Ciara Harpster, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kira, and I'm a Sacramento renter. Last year, I moved to Sacramento from Southern California, and while I am more easily able to make rent here in Sacramento than before, rents in Sacramento are rising at an alarming rate and are showing no sign of slowing down in their increase. In the time I've been in Sacramento, my rent has gone up, and if that trend continues, I'll have to start looking outside of the city. And in this, I am not alone. In the past year, my rent in the building has increased by 10%. Compounding this issue, people are being evicted without cause in favor of higher-paying tenants. Furthermore, the currently proposed mediation program would do nothing to provide increases such as happened in my building and would not ease the burden of future increases in Sacramento for renters. That is to say, it is simply insufficient. Raising rents across the city are pricing people out of affordable housing entirely, making the situation wholly untenable. As city council members, you have the power to help renter voters find and keep sustainable housing in our cities, or in our city, pardon me, to make and enact lasting change that betters Sacramento. Therefore, I am calling on Sacramento City Council to take action now and pass real solutions for Sacramento renters: a cap on rent increases, an end to unjust evictions, and the establishment of, the establishment of, an unpaid board with the authority to settle disputes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bobby Dalton G. Roy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Bobby Roy. I am a homeowner in District 7, and of the 17,000 renter voters that reside in District 7, this is more than 10% of the 144 renter voters in the entire city of Sacramento. And unfortunately, this proposal and what the, what the staff has drafted fails to help these renters. As a homeowner, I support rent stabilization and just cause eviction. These homelessness numbers and rent prices don't capture the extent of the crisis that we're in. As a result, available data are limited and underestimate the housing problems. And while the available data shows 80% of extremely low-income families are spending more than half of their income on their rent, looking at the Filipino, and 2/3 and 3/5 of black tenants and Latino tenants pay 1/3 of their income on their rent, looking at the Filipino population, to which I belong, and we are the largest Asian-American group in Sacramento, we're absent or barely visible in the available data. We're still hard hit by rising rents and affiliated housing costs. Filipinos are living in crowded and small apartments in bad conditions, and although we are clearly impacted by the data, or by the conditions, we're not in the data because we may live indoors in overcrowded, unsafe apartments rather than on the street. As a financial fiduciary, I know that even people who are able to avoid homelessness because of the rising rent, rent are forced to pay for these inflated rent prices with funds that will otherwise go to cover savings or basic expenses, and they're, they're unfortunately mortgaging their future for their present. Students on Stack State, 10% of them are experiencing homelessness right now, and low-income students are particularly vulnerable and must often deal with the predatory landlords. So lack of affordable housing has spurred economic inequality, poverty, and homelessness. It's inequitable, and it's disproportionately affecting us. Thank you.
Christie Correa, Gilbert Gollum, then Lilly Bach.
Hello, council members and mayor. I first just wanted to introduce myself, that's why I'm here tonight. I am a Sacramento native. I am a McClatchy, HISP, and Restor the Roar alumni. My children are third-generation McClatchy students. I live and work now in downtown. I am a state employee. I work for the Department of Public Health. I am an SEIU Local 1,000 member and proud of it. I am a member of the Cathedral Church, and I am participating here tonight as a renter. I have rented a home in Land Park my children's whole life. I have kids in college, and now I am sharing an apartment as rent has gone up three times for me in the last three years. I need to work and be downtown, and I want to stay downtown. And if my rent continues to be raised, and if there is no binding mediation or just cause policy in place where I, as a renter who pay my rent on time, who, who is a good tenant, I'm forced out because of greed or gouging, I just think that that's something that the city council can prevent for a state worker like me from losing my downtown apartment where I can walk to work and be part of this neighborhood and this community. I, I look at the homeless and, you know, I wonder, you know, how far away am I literally from losing my place? If I lose my apartment, where am I supposed to go? So please think of that when you're deciding policy for people like me who rent, and this is, downtown is my neighborhood, this is my home. So when we're talking about making policy and putting it into effect, I want you to remember my name because I see you on Instagram, I comment, and I love all that you're doing and all the advocacy for homelessness, I really do, but I want you to remember that I'm this far away from it too.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Gilbert Gollum, then Lilly Bach, and then Omega Brewer. Gilbert Gollum, Lilly Bach, then Omega Brewer.
Hi, my name is Gilbert Gollum. I'm a renter in Midtown in District 4. I'm also the local secretary for AFG 1230. I represent officers at Sacramento International. This year, federal officers got an increase of 2%. My rent went up 10%, which means I lost buying power, basically, and this is a pretty common story between, with a lot of our officers on the ground. And many of them live paycheck to paycheck. They have a hard time paying their rent, and this was especially bad when we went through the shutdown, and they saw, they, many of their landlords didn't care if they couldn't pay their, that they couldn't pay their rents, threatened evictions, and it was really hard dealing with the, you know, a lot of the stress and emotional pain during this time. So, but basically, the proposal has no teeth. Mediation is basically a rubber stamp for, for rent increases. It doesn't protect, it doesn't protect people. What we need is a board to look at, to look at these rent increases and to, you know, figure this stuff out. And we also need just cause for evictions to protect people like my officers that are trying to protect people at the airport when they travel. That's it.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Bach, then Omega Brewer, then Michelle Paraset.
Good evening. My name is Lilly Bach. I'm here to oppose item number one. I recently just moved back to my home state here in California from Florida to be closer to family. However, I didn't realize how close I'd be living with family because I am now living with my parents because I cannot find affordable housing here or safe housing in Sacramento. Oftentimes, I'm now having to commute two hours every day because of this. Sometimes I get so tired from driving that I pull over just to make sure, you know, catch breath, turn on music loud, whatever, and oftentimes contemplate if I should just sleep in my car. And I'm sure to all the women out here, that is terrifying. So the only way that I feel that we can do something here in Sacramento is to ensure we have the rent cap and just cause for evictions, as well as unpaid board with authority to help settle disputes. The only way I can best describe this current item is by putting a Band-Aid on a gushing flush wound, and frankly, I'm grossly offended the city would even put forth something like that when we know that this is a huge problem, and that I think if we can all come together to make these changes, we can hopefully have safety and affordable housing for everyone.
Omega Brewer, then Michelle Paraset.
Good evening. My name is Omega Brewer. I am a resident in District 4. I am the political, Northern California Political Coordinator with SEIU Local 2015. We represent long-term care workers, so homeworkers, home care workers and nursing homeworkers. We represent 20,000 in the city of Sacramento alone. I'm here both as a tenant and as an advocate for the members of Local 2015. As a tenant, my own rent just went up, and my fiance and I are now having to make a decision about living, whether or not we can afford to live in a community that I've literally lived in since I was 12 years old. I have been an Natomas resident since my family moved in when I, starting my eighth-grade year of junior high school, I've only briefly lived outside of Natomas in my entire adult life. I am an Natomas resident. It is heartbreaking personally for me to make, have to make a different choice, not because I want to, it's my neighborhood, it's my hood. It's because I'm now in a position where I really can't afford it. And knowing and thinking about it from the point of my members who are long-term care workers, they make a dollar over minimum wage, and they are hit and impacted on a much grander and most gross, more gross scale than I am. We're in a crisis. It's, it's no secret. The work that you're doing that with homelessness, I do applaud, but we're, we're not doing the real work of actually preventing homelessness. This proposal does not do that. This proposal, I've heard a couple times now, is a first step, and I, as a, as a tenant, I fail to see how that is a real meaningful step. The mediation, there's no teeth to it, and there's nothing in this proposal that actually prohibits an 18-month lease being offered with a skyrocketing rent. So I would just urge you all to go back to the drawing board, meet with all the stakeholders, and actually come up with a proposal that meets both needs.
Comment, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Paraset. Following Michelle is Katie Valenzuela, then Jonah Paul.
Hi, good evening, Michelle Paraset. I am a homeowner and a landlord in District 6. I work for public advocates, and we are part of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition. I appreciated the mayor's comments on insight today, and I agree that we need a negotiated solution for this ordinance that includes main stakeholders. This ordinance being passed for publication tonight was developed without input from tenants and advocates, and it shows. Non-binding mediation is essentially going to therapy with your landlord, and it does not work to stabilize rents. I've given a letter to the Clerk to share with you all. It's from the Housing Director of Fremont, who designed and implemented their mediation program. She said it was ultimately useless and reflected poorly on the city. We've also had mediation here in Sacramento before through SHRA, through the Shriver Grant. That was also a failure. Despite our disagreement on how to help tenants, and I believe good people of conscience can disagree, I believe we can find a solution with stakeholders at the table. I ask you to please delay voting on this ordinance next week and have a process that includes tenants and advocate input. Thank you.
Katie Valenzuela, Jonah Paul, then Jorana Fajaro.
Good evening. My name is Katie Valenzuela. I'm a renter in District 4, where 2/3 of registered voters are renters. The problem with that stated in this ordinance is something that I agree with. The rents are growing faster than they are anywhere else in the nation. This doesn't just have an impact, though, on those who can't afford their rent or those who end up on the streets, it impacts all of us, and is not something that I want my city to be known for. The problem with this proposal is that it does nothing to address the stated problem in the ordinance. We know that non-binding mediation is not a solution, and that 18-month leases, when you can't afford the rent, is not a solution. The only thing that will help are caps on rent increases and just cause eviction policies. Let's make Sacramento known for doing what's right for tenants and not move forward with this ordinance next week. Thank you.
Jonah Paul, then Jorana Fajaro, then Michael Anderson.
Hi, my name is Jonah. I'm a renter in District 3. This morning on the radio, the mayor talked about the millions the city handed over to the billionaire-owned Sacramento Republic soccer team, and the city government's generosity when it comes to billionaires is bottomless, but what about for us not asking for handouts? We're here as renters. We work in a city where you're only asking for rights. The mayor said this in the interview. To me, every time we get into an either-or in our city, we're falling behind. This is a city that deserves it all. I think we agree. But there is someone who is receiving it all, and it's not renters. Mr. Mayor, council members, for us renters, for us renters, everyday life is either-or. We either pay the 20% rent increase by skipping meals, or we move. We either accept the unjustified notice to vacate, or the sheriff locks us out of our homes. We either live with the moldy apartment, or we crash on someone's couch. For landlords, everyday is a both-and. The charge, they charge as much as they like, and they evict us for raising complaints. They take half of our wages and give us, give their corporate shareholders a bonus. They choose exactly who gets renovations and who gets stuck with a broken AC. They treat renters how they wish, on the base of race, gender, how many kids they have, we have, whether we have a partner, whether we, where we grew up, what language we speak. They do it all without consequence. We have a both-and solution: rent stabilization, renters have a protection in the form of rent caps, and landlords make a reasonable profit. Just cause eviction, landlords evict their tenants, and renters know why they are being evicted. And unpaid board to settle disputes, landlords and tenants have a binding way to settle problems without lengthy and expensive court hearings. Our city fell behind. It's time to help renters by taking up real solutions. Our city, our city and not just the billionaires deserve it all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Giovanna Fajardo. I am with ACE. I had the privilege of organizing throughout other cities before coming to the beautiful town of Sacramento, and they passed, I was part of the process when they passed mediation in the city of Concord. Unfortunately, the families that I were working with had it worse off after the mediation. They went through several months of sharing their story, of talking with the landlord, only after to have eviction notice, to have harassment, to be targeted for standing up and sharing their story to the city staff. And I'm afraid that's going to happen worse off now. As it is, we're getting tenants specifically from District 8 and District 7 that are coming to our office with horrible, horrible conditions, and already being retaliated, already being targeted. So we're asking, we, we understand that for, for some people, this is a step forward, and we don't see that because we've gone through it. We go and knock on these tenants, and we go into their homes, and we don't just hear the stories, we see the mold, we get cussed out by the property manager for giving tenants education of what their rights are, of how a landlord can't just evict them verbally and evict them in three days. Because of that, we need you guys to step up for our tenants now and pass a real program around their, stopping the rent gouging, around the unjust evictions. You could call it whatever you want, but we need real solutions, and we're, we're here to have a conversation and figure this out. So if you could please postpone the vote next week and sit down with families, maybe go into an actual tenant's house and see the conditions they're living with, I could definitely have one of our tenants open the door for you guys. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Anderson, then Nakia Briscoe, then Robert Copeland.
Hello, my name is Michael Paul Anderson. This is my dog Mario. I'd like to thank the council members, the mayor for hearing me speak today, and Laura from ACE asking me to speak, and also wanted to thank him actually working with something you backed, Mayor, Pathways Home and Care, through a case manager named Patrick that's helped me navigate some resources to get back on my feet. With that said, we're living out of the truck, came back from the bay, it's too expensive for some work and whatnot, and some other reasons. We're living out of the truck till we get back on our feet. So once I get an apartment, what scares me is not having a rent cap of maybe 5% a year. Maybe something like that would work, so we wouldn't not be able to do it after the lease, just to skyrocket to whatever they want. That's just an idea I throw out there. I think they do that in a few other cities. And also, yeah, that, and thank you for your time. Yeah, that kind of scares me, not having a rent cap, so. And thank you for the resources through the home health and care through Pathways. Thank you, have a good evening.
Nakia Briscoe, Robert Copeland, then Tammy Dramer.
My name's Nakia Briscoe. I am a state worker as well as a renter in District 8. I am a voter, and I actually do vote. I am a renter, and I have five children and one granddaughter that I am taking care of. My rent is more than half of my paycheck. You guys, I'm sure, have children, you guys know that they need things. I don't want affordable housing. I want to be able to afford to keep my kids in the nice area that I live in now. Affordable housing, I don't knock it for people that stay in it, but unfortunately, it's riddled with crime and drugs, and I don't want to raise my kids in that environment, nor my grandchild. I can barely afford to get by as-is. I would like for you guys to put yourselves in our shoes and actually consider the situation, not yours, but ours. Mediation is not a solution. It's a Band-Aid that's actually not even really covering the whole wound. It's not a solution. Please pass something that is actually going to help us that are working, trying to take care of our families, be able to afford to stay in our homes. That is it.
Thank you for coming.
Robert Copeland, then Tammy Dramer, then Elliot Stevenson, and Jonah Carrillo.
Just over a week ago, I was in Oakland as part of a Sacramento Tenants Union for a tenant counseling training. I talked to a lady from Concord. She told me flat-out rent mediation does not work. So why is Sacramento trying something that's not working? We need more affordable housing, we need, because people are one paycheck away from being homeless, and Sacramento City Council is not addressing that, to my satisfaction. We need just cause eviction, rent stabilization. Why are we one of the fastest-growing rent increases by percentage rate in the entire nation? That is a failure on the Sacramento City Council's part. We deserve it all. We want to be a world-class city. That means a world-class city for all people, not just for the rich, not just for the Sacramento Republic FC, or the Sacramento Kings, but for everyone in the city. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy Dramer, and I'm a more than 20-year resident of District 6. Homeowner, have an adult child with a degree from Mills College, living at home. She went through a divorce. She can't afford to live on her own. So you can see that, you know, even those of us who have been here before you repeatedly and have, you know, good jobs, we're still all impacted by what's going on in Sacramento. There's no easy solution, we know that. We did manage to pass an initiative that told us that at least 44,000 voters agree that there should be rent controls, rent stabilization, just cause eviction, and a rent board to, you know, provide a service to both renters and landlords to settle their disputes rather than go into the courts. This mediation that's offered isn't binding. It doesn't mean anything. Tenants can end up being the targets of those landlords after they go through mediation and speak their truths. So that's not going to work. The 18-month lease option, you just offer an optional $2,000 a month, 18-month lease, or you offer $900 a month, month to month. We know what the choice is going to be, and then, you know, it's just a fake thing. So we ask you that if we can't come together and work something out, that you go ahead and pass something to put our initiative on the ballot in March so that we can go ahead and move forward and stop wasting everybody's time.
Elliot Stevenson, then Jonah Carrillo, then Nick Fish, and Peter Lucas.
Good evening. I'm Elliot Stevenson, here on behalf of the Sacramento Tenants Union. I'm a tenant in District 4, and I would like to voice my opposition to this ordinance the way it stands now. It's pretty milquetoast, and with something toothless like this, I guess it's good that it's toast. We need some serious rent control. We need some just cause eviction. We need to take into account things that are working well in other cities to help tenants survive. Like others have stated here before, mediation has been tried elsewhere and has failed. I don't know why we want to repeat failed policy here in Sacramento if we're looking to be an innovative and forward-thinking place. So, sorry, I lost my train of thought. Anyway, rent control, just cause eviction, we need to help the tenants of this city. We need to help stop making them poorer and poorer each year as their rent goes up, but their wages stay stagnant. Anything to do with that, I'm here to help. Otherwise, we're here to oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Johan Carrillo, then Nick Fish, then Peter Lucas.
Good evening. My name is Johan Carrillo. I am a state worker, a college student, and a deeply concerned resident of District 6. This non-binding mediation... Uh, this, uh, non-binding mediation proposal has proven to be a failure in other cities. It's not, hasn't worked in Fremont, it hasn't worked in Concord, it's not gonna work in Sacramento. The fact that it is non-binding is, makes it inherently useless in resolving disputes between tenants and landlords. Um, what we really need, what we need is just cause evictions and rent stabilization. Anything less than that will be less than useless. Thank you.
[applause]
Nick Fish, then Peter Lucas.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Nick Fish. I'm a renter in District Five. Uh, I have professional experience in affordable housing research, um, with San Francisco State University, the Center for Applied Housing Research, San Francisco's Mayor's Office of Housing and Community Development, as well as the San Francisco Tenants Union. Um, through all my experience, uh, binding and enforceable rent stabilization is an absolute necessary tool to keep people inside their homes during crises. If it were not for rent control, San Francisco and New York City would no longer have working classes in communities of color. In California, Prop 13 allows property owners to pay taxes on assessed values dating as far back as 1976, but all property tax increases are limited to a mere 2% each year. Sacramento tenants lack equivalent protections against financially unscrupulous landlords. Knowing this, the language of this measure is unjustifiably biased in its criticism of rent control. It should be thus amended so as to not prop up speculation at the expense of tenants' struggle. Sacramento tenants need rental stabil, stabilization as well as eviction defenses. However, until Costa-Hawkins is repealed, meaningful steps to alleviate the unethical trend of price gouging and displacement must be taken to, uh, must be taken to prevent further destruction of fragile communities and pandemic homelessness. It is time for city council to provide tenants with decency and stability by amending this measure to include, within your obligation to the Costa-Hawkins Act, just cause eviction, and if you can, complete binding mediation, uh, mandatory 18-month leasing options on all units built before 1995, as well as rental caps. Thank you.
[applause]
Peter Lucas, then Imani Davis, then Karen Boxley.
Good evening. My name is Peter Lucas. I'm actually not a Sacramento renter, however, I do have an interesting perspective on Sacramento housing and rent control. I work with families experiencing homelessness who have been pushed out onto the streets because of a lack of rent control and just cause eviction laws. These families have come to realize the harsh, harsh reality that homelessness is a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week job that will beat you down, and it's absolutely devastating. It can tear families apart. And so I call on the city council here tonight, uh, with my fellow community members to ditch this rental mediation program, which does in fact, it does not have any teeth to it, and pass real solutions for renters that include rent control and unpaid board of renters to help protect all renters in the city, not just the millionaire class. Thank you.
[applause]
The next speaker is Imani Davis, then Karen Boxley, then Philip Kim.
Good evening. Thanks, you know, to everyone for being here. So, uh, I'm Imani Davis. Um, I'm with Extinction Rebellion, which is a non-violent direct action group that's, uh, that's addressing climate change and the urgency for it. So I do wanna say to the first, um, agenda item, I do oppose it. I think, uh, a lot of people, a lot more educated than me, have definitely spoken on the issue that, you know, to really address housing, uh, we don't need mediation per se with, um, I mean, we need that as well, mediation with, um, you know, with landlords, but that's not the most important pressing issue. And I think probably most of you here in the council and mayor yourself, you know, understand that there are definitely more urgent, uh, more, like, uh, I guess, just heavier legislation that you can put in that will really put, you know, a, a halt on homelessness. And just like, um, this woman here in pink, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, you know, I think she makes a really good point that a lot of folks are working-class people that are being put on the street, working in government, putting their children through college, doing everything, you know, we're told the American dream is, and she's still worried about being homeless? Like, it's just, I, I just feel like a lot of times, it's like a, it's like a, uh, it's a point of logic at this point. Like, if she has to worry about being homeless, something's not being done right, enough is not being done right. So I definitely, uh, wanna just acknowledge the housing on the agenda. I do oppose that, but also just wanna let folks know that Extinction Rebellion, uh, just introducing ourselves to you all, um, we're gonna be hopefully making some more noise here in Sacramento because, uh, also, we are in a climate emergency, and I hope you all will take that into consideration, that that needs to be dealt with as well, as stringically as you need to do with housing. Thank you.
[applause]
The last two speakers are Karen Boxley and Philip Kim. I do wanna remind the audience, this is a special meeting, so there is no, um, no public comment for matters not on the agenda.
I'm Karen Boxley. I'm a registered nurse and a proud member of the California Nurses Association. Um, stories to tell. I mean, I have patients that can't be sent home because they live on the street and they have medical conditions. I go out and try to help on North B&amp;A Hearn, and there are intent cities and there's the patients there with a lot of medical conditions, and they go through sweeps and then they lose their shelter, and they can't afford housing. Um, I have friends that are working-class citizens that they can't afford their rent, and they're having to room with people in, um, domestic violence situations because they can't afford to be out on their own. Um, that's why I'm here today, to endorse the rent control measure. Um, we're calling for a city council to act now and pass real resolutions for tenants, a rent freeze, just cause for evictions, and an unpaid board with authority to help settle disputes. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
And hello. Uh, my name's Philip Kim. I'm an organizer with the California Nurses Association, uh, also the treasurer of the well-stone progressive Democrats of Sacramento, and a proud member of the Democratic Socialists of America. And, um, I'm here, um, because I oppose the measure that you're considering, um, for rent mediation, and I, I stand in strong support of rent control, real rent control, which we endorsed as an organization. Uh, and we are calling on you to set that, um, to put it on the ballot for March. Uh, the voters in California got the signatures, and we want, we want it to be voted on in March. Uh, so you should set that as soon as possible. And I live in Citrus Heights, um, and, uh, you know, one of the things I've noticed is that the rent is noticeably increasing, just in the last couple of years, at a very, very, very rapid rate, not just in Sacramento, but throughout the whole region and throughout the whole state. And every day, when I drive into Sacramento on Highway 160, I can see that. I see those tent cities. I see a lot of homelessness that has noticeably increased in just the last couple of years here. And what you're doing is you're forcing people into this cruel, weird existence, uh, where you're tearing down their tents and periodically, you know, you do that periodically, and then they have to, uh, find more shelter and, and they set those up again, and you're repeating this. And what we really need is, we need, uh, relief. Renters in the Sacramento area need relief, and we're counting on you, the city council and the mayor, to lead the region, lead the state by passing real rent control, putting it on the ballot for March. So, um, we're calling on you to, um, the city council to pass real solutions, a rent freeze, just cause for evictions, and an unpaid board with authority to help settle disputes. Thank you very much.
[applause] Oh, that is the public testimony. And again, there is a motion, why, we may need a renewed motion, 'cause it, move, move item one, uh, seconded, seconded. And again, this is a pass for publication. There will be a full hearing. So we don't wanna, we, we cannot debate this tonight, 'cause it's just a pass for publication. I do wanna just put one or, one or two questions on the record here, because I, I think as you prepare for next week, um, this is some information that I think is important. Um, to the opponents of the ordinance, um, in November, last November, the California voters, uh, voted down a, an amendment of the statewide Costa-Hawkins law. And so do we have the power as a city, if we chose either by initiative or by ordinance, to impose rent caps, uh, for any properties that were constructed in 1995 or later? Okay, well, that's relevant here in terms of how we attempt to address the overall, the overarching issue of, of incentivizing housing construction and production, and at the same time protecting, uh, as many people as possible. The second question may be more towards colleagues, my proponents, the proponents here. Is there a requirement in the proposed ordinance that would, um, essentially provide anti-retaliation protection for tenants who seek to exercise their mediation rights? That's one. The second one, this response to Tammy Dramer's testimony, is there anything that would require the rental rate for a month-to-month lease, uh, offering to be the same as for an 18-month o, offering? I don't need those answered tonight. These are just things that I thought I would, I would just raise publicly as we prepare for a full, uh, hearing and debate next week. Okay? Um, there's a motion and a second on the pass for publication, which is not, again, a vote on the merits, but just to move it to next week for a debate. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Okay. Um, that will be heard next week, and we welcome you all back. Okay? Thank you very much, everybody. The dogs welcome back, too. Okay, we now move, um, and thank you for proceeding quietly out the chambers, those who are, were here for the last item. We now move to file item five, which is our discussion item for this evening. Let me, uh, tell you how we intend to proceed tonight. Without objection, there are 54 speakers signed up. We may be able to get to everyone, I don't know, but what we do when we have controversial items with a lot of public testimony is that we try to order in a way that is fair to both sides. So what we're gonna do is set aside a maximum of one hour apiece for testimony for the proponents of the, uh, ordinance, and then an hour for the opponents. And, uh, and maybe less than an hour on each side, but we wanna, uh, limit it to that. So it'll be two hours of maximum public testimony. After the staff presentation, and, um, my members, up to you whether you wanna ask the questions prior to the public, your comments, questions prior to the public testimony or after. Take the public testimony first. Let's get to staff presentation, then we'll get right into the public testimony, and then we'll turn it to the city council for discussion and potential resolution. Who's presenting? Evening.
Evening, Mayor. Uh, city council members, Jose Mendez, county enforcement manager with the Community Development Department.
Mendez?
At the August 22nd, 2017 city council meeting, Councilmember Ashby detailed issues of crime, loitering, and potential harm to youth related to the sale of tobacco by stores in her district. Staff was directed to prepare an ordinance that would provide additional oversight by the city regarding these issues. At the November 28th, 2017 Law and Legislation Committee, staff proposed an ordinance in Title 17 that would regulate tobacco retailers by requiring a conditional use permit for existing and new retailers. The committee decided not to regulate tobacco retailers through land use and directed staff to strengthen tobacco regulations in Title V instead, which is the ordinance proposed to you today. There are four major components to the proposed ordinance. The first component prohibits the sale of flavored tobacco products, including mentholated cigarettes. Second updates the definition of smoking to include electronic cigarettes. This amendment would provide the ability to regulate vape shops, which currently are not required to obtain tobacco retail licenses. The third component incorporates a proximity requirement between tobacco retailers that would prohibit the issuance of a new license between, license within 1,000 feet of an existing retailer. Currently licensed retailers can continue to operate and renew their annual non-transferable license, provided that certain conditions are met. The proximity requirement would apply to 79% of retailers. The last part updates the city code to reflect recent changes made to state law, including raising the age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21 years of age. To gather feedback and suggestions on the proposed amendments, staff held a stakeholder meeting on September 18th, 2018, and invited all licensed retailers to attend. Staff also met with representatives of the tobacco industry, including Juul, the electronic cigarette manufacturer, the American Petroleum and Convenience Store Association, and California Fuels and Convenience Alliance to gather potential solutions in lieu of implementation of all parts of the proposed ordinance. On March 19th, 2019, tobacco industry representatives presented alternatives to the Law and Legislation Committee, but they, they were unanimously rejected, and staff was directed to move forward with the proposed ordinance. At the same meeting, staff was asked to provide figures regarding the potential financial impact of this ordinance to the city of Sacramento and the tobacco industry. Unfortunately, this information is not available, as the city does not collect sales or, or business tax data by category. However, the tobacco industry projects that the city will lose 2.3 million in local tax revenue. They also project a loss of over 111 million in flavored tobacco sales and 20 million in ancillary sales. These figures were provided by RJ Reynolds and calculated using the city's tax rate, state tax figures, and industry information from wholesalers. Eric Rasmussen of RJ Reynolds is present today. Should council want further information on how these figures were calculated? Councilmember Garrett asked staff to provide data reflecting the impact of flavored products on our youth here in Sacramento. While local data was not immediately available, a recent study provided surveillance data at 12 Bay Area high schools and the collection of discarded Juul pod caps, packaging from flavored cigarettos and cigarette butts. Salient results of the study found that 99% of discarded Juul pods were, were flavored, and 41 of cigarette butts were from menthol cigarettes. You have a copy of this study in front of you as well. Additionally, I think it's important to state that the outgoing FDA commissioner called the phenomenon the teen vaping an epidemic, and admitted that the pod-based flavored products created by Juul are driving youth to use them. The Law and Legislation Committee also wanted outcomes from other municipalities that have adopted similar regulations. Staff consulted with over 10 municipalities throughout the state, but none have conducted an analysis to determine the outcome of their policies. However, a case study evaluating New York City's 2010 flavored tobacco ban found that three years after its implementation, there was a 20% decrease in youth that reported ever using flavored tobacco, and youth surveyed had 28% lower odds of ever using any type of tobacco product as compared to the percent to youth prior to the ban. The final piece of information requested by the committee was to provide inventory cycle information to allow retailers enough time to deplete their inventory should this ordinance pass. Staff consulted with RKF Consulting, a consultant representing the vaping industry, and they indicated that it would take 12 to 18 months to deplete flavored products, which accounts for approximately 85 to 90% of sales for most retailers. Additionally, staff surveyed 14 municipalities throughout the state that adopted similar regulations and found that most provided retailers a grace period that ranged between seven months to two years. In summary, staff recommends that council adopt an ordinance revising Chapter 5.138 of the Sacramento City Code relating to tobacco retailers. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and I'm accompanied today by Carl Simpson, the code and housing chief, Bo Parker, uh, senior deputy attorney, and Aaron Israel, deputy city attorney. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, um, for the presentation, and we have, as you say, a number of staff here as resources. We ask questions. Of course, we have every member, understandably wants to talk on this item, but I think we're gonna go right to the public testimony, uh, before we, uh, do anything. So, what, what is the traditional, remind me, members, to begin with the opposition or the support generally? Does it matter? Let's begin with the support first for the ordinance, then we'll go to the opposition. Okay? It is five minutes to seven, and so we'll go a maximum five minutes to eight on this, on the support. Okay?
My first speaker is Bobby Dalton G. Roy, Carol Matum, then La Familia's Youth, then Puschet Robertson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I, again, live in District Seven, uh, and I attended Valley High School in District Seven. When I was a student there, I actually volunteered. I was part of a program with the American Heart Association, where we were reimbursed for going to movies and count how many times, uh, tobacco products showed up in movies. And we tallied that, know those numbers, and we sent them into the American Heart Association so that we could, um, gather the data, so that we could change the attitudes, beliefs, and conditions that led to the use of tobacco products by teens. Um, unfortunately, today, because of things like these flavored tobacco products, uh, the amount, and we reached a point where 77% of teens in California would report that they have never used tobacco products. I like to think that that program was part of it. Between the years... Between the years of 2017 and 2018, though, the amount of tobacco use shot up by 78%, and that's partially because of these flavored tobacco products. So I fully support this recommendation, and I hope that you'll vote for it. Thank you.
Carol Maitam. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight, council members. My name is Carol Maitam, and I'm here tonight as the chair of the Sacramento Tobacco Control Coalition. And I'd like to talk to you tonight about the density of tobacco retail stores in Sacramento. In other words, how the location of tobacco retailers impacts our health. Place-based planning has been, for health, has been in place for centuries, from reducing the spread of communicable diseases by mapping sewage facilities, to more recent controls that reduce the availability of alcohol. Strategies limiting the availability of alcohol has been proven effective in reducing alcohol consumption. Given this success, it's important that we look at place-based planning strategies that can be used as another spoke in the wheel of our larger tobacco control efforts. Licensing and zoning are two of the most long-lasting strategies to impact the density of tobacco retailers. The density of tobacco retailers in our communities is important because the retail availability of tobacco has several impacts. The first being that it perpetuates social norms about tobacco use. The presence of tobacco retailers gives the impression that tobacco is available and accessible. It increases the exposure to point-of-sale advertising, marketing, and promotions, and tobacco companies put the majority of their promotional and marketing and money at tobacco retailers. It contributes to social and environmental inequities. Tobacco retail outlet density is higher in low-income and minority neighborhoods, fueling disparities in tobacco use and its associated health effects. Tobacco control will not be accomplished through a one-size-fits-all approach. This strategy in the ordinance would limit retailers to require a minimum density of 1,000 feet of an existing store. Impacting retailer density is one important part of the solution. For this reason, I am supportive of the proposed ordinance at the minimum distance of 1,000 feet between tobacco retailers. Thank you.
La Familia's Youth, then Plushette Robertson, then Grace Cuff.
Hi, my name is Leslie Susneros. I'm 17, and I go to Endercombe High School. I'm here in favor of the flavored tobacco ban because it targets me. Growing up, my dad smoked every day, and my brother and I, we tried to convince him to stop due to fear of lung cancer and because we always hated the smell on his clothes and on his breath. One day, he stopped, and I promised myself to never smoke it. Yet a few months ago, my friend introduced me to an air, which is another form of a Juul, and it smelled like Jolly, Watermelon Jolly Rancher, and I was tempted to try it. I didn't like it, it hurt my throat, and I felt like I was going to throw up. This caused fear in me that my 11-year-old brother would also want to try it one day because it smells like candy, and he may not know otherwise. Flavored tobacco is targeting me, and it's targeting my brother.
Hi, my name is Fabiana. I'm 17, and I'm part of the Twin Rivers School District. I'm here to ask for your full support on the flavor ban because it targets me. When a person smokes, they smoke for the nicotine and the feeling they get from it, not the flavor. These flavors are addicting youth to tobacco by masking the harm with yummy flavors and kid-friendly packaging. Youth are unconsciously using flavored tobacco due to stress without realizing they are creating a dependency. For example, I've seen youth in my school ask to use the restroom only to go smoke before a test to calm their nerves. This shows that not only is flavored tobacco harming youths physically, but also creates unhealthy coping mechanisms.
Hi, my name is America Rodriguez. I'm 18. I'm a senior, and I've been here for mostly 18 years. I know Jay, I know he's going to support us, and I don't have a long time, but we are asking for your favor, because it's not just us, it's just our sisters, our brothers, and our elderly. It's our Sacramento, so we want to protect it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do you want to come sit here now, or do you want to...
Good job. Thank you.
Plushette Robertson, then Grace Cuff, and Faith Cuff.
Hello, council members. Once again, I stand before you as I am Plushette Robertson, homeowner and council member Carls, Cars District for the past 18 years, and operating my business at culturalhub.com Media Company, and council member Shanir's District for the last, past six years. I have three daughters, five grandsons, and I'm an aunt to several nieces and nephews. As our media company has become a trusted messenger for Black communities in the greater Sacramento Valley region and beyond, I am so disappointed with big tobacco companies that take advantage of us and prey on our community, especially the youth, for the sake of profits. Tobacco and vape industries specifically target the African-American community with cheap flavored tobacco to encourage a lifelong addiction. Products like Swisher sweet cigarettos and Newport menthol cigarettes are sold more often and cheaper in Black neighborhoods, making these products easier for us to get, and they are advertised more in our communities as well. This is racial profiling, and it is a social injustice. Restricting the sale of menthol cigarettes and all-flavored tobacco product will save lives. It is estimated that over a half a million lives will be saved, a fourth of them African-Americans. I implore that all of you council members support the ban on all flavored tobacco products in Sacramento to protect our youth and our community. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
Thank you.
Grace, and then Faith.
Good evening. My name is Grace Cuffey, and I'm a freshman at Valley High School. I support the ending of the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. I am concerned because I want to protect families like mine from a lifetime of addiction. In my family, I have seen the cost of using these products. My grandfather lost his teeth and now needs dentures. My mom wants to quit, but her addiction is too strong. Flavors like menthol make it easier for youth to get hooked on nicotine. Please support the ban of all flavored tobacco products in Sacramento to protect our youth and our future generations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Faith Cuffey, then Samaria Lewis, then Cassia Lewis.
Good evening. My name is Faith Cuffey, and I'm a senior at Valley High School. I support ending the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. I am concerned because I want to protect teens like me from a lifelong addiction. In my school, I have seen my classmates get hooked on nicotine and controlled by their addiction. Ending the sale of flavored tobacco products protects young people from a lifelong time of nicotine addiction. Over 80% of youth who have ever tried tobacco started with a flavored product. And 97% of youth e-cigarette users have used a flavored tobacco, have used a flavored cigarette in the past month. Please support the ban of flavored tobacco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Welcome to you.
It looks like we have the Lewis's, Samaria, Cassia, Ciara.
She's good, we can hear. Hi.
My name is Samaria. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Samaria Lewis, and I am a kindergarten at SAC Prep. I support ending the sale of menthol and flavored, flavored, flavored tobacco products because it's not healthy for kids and will make them sick. It's important because kids can get healthy, and the products are fun-looking, they're are easy to get. Please consider stopping the sale of menthol and flavored tobacco because I, because I do not like kids to get sick, and tobacco is not healthy for us. Thank you for your time.
There. Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Bring her back. Did you say, wait a minute? Tell me your, tell me your name. I know I'm over here on the other side of the thing, so you can't quite see me.
Samaria.
Samaria, how old are you?
Six.
So I have a five-year-old, she's a kindergartner, too. I'm going to need you to come over to my house and help her with her reading, okay? Because that was really, really impressive, young lady. Good job. Good, those were a lot of big words.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Casailis, and I am a second grader at SAC Prep. I support ending the sale of all menthol and flavored tobacco products because kids are precious and can be infested. It's important because four out of five youth who ever tried tobacco started with a flavored product. They are cheap and easy to get. Please consider to stop selling menthol-flavored tobacco because kids want to be healthy. We are easy to infest. Thank you for your, this time.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now have Ciara and then Kaylani.
Good evening. My name is Ciara. I'm a middle schooler at Soul Arias. I support ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. I am concerned because flavors like menthol make it easier for youth to get hooked on nicotine. The tobacco industry targets youth and low-income companies with sweet, cheap, and easy-to-get flavored products. And because of, because of this targeting, more teen, more teens are using tobacco, and people are having a harder time quitting. All three recently brought up 35% of Juul. In case there was any doubt, big tobacco is now fully a part of the e-cigarette industry. Please support the ban on all flavored tobacco products in Sacramento to protect our youth and our community. Thank you for your time.
Kaylani Lewis, and then Milton Nguyen.
Good evening. My name is Kaylani Lewis. I'm a seventh grader at Soul Arias College Preparatory. I support the ending of, the ending sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. I'm concerned because tobacco, the tobacco industry targets youth and low-income communities with sweet, cheap, and easy-to-get flavored products. And because of this targeting, more teens are using tobacco, and people are having a harder time quitting. I want youth and teens like me to stay healthy. Please support the ban of all flavored tobacco products in Sacramento to protect, to protect our youth and community. Thank you for your time.
Milton Nguyen, then Saharanya Saram, then Dakara Johnson.
Esteemed council members, my name is Milton Nguyen, and I'm a local youth advocate from Breathe, California, in Sacramento. Unfortunately, this evening, I'm not able to speak with joy, but rather with the burden of knowing that my fellow peers, classmates, and closest friends are dying at the expense of flavored tobacco. There is no denying the fact that flavored tobacco has created a new epidemic among my age group. Statistics show that there has been a 78% increase in youth e-cigarette use from 2017 to 2018, which translates to a 1.5 million youth increase. The cause of this increase is flavored tobacco. It has been reported that seven out of every 10 teen tobacco user has used a flavored product in the past month. To you, these statistics may seem just like another number on a page, but for me, as a student who has to live through this flavored tobacco epidemic daily within my school and outside of it as well, it is truly another world that cannot fully be described in words. I expect my school to be a safe area where learning can be prioritized, but now instead, it has become a safe haven for these horrendous and addictive electronic nicotine devices that deliver flavored tobacco. At times, you can enter a classroom where you see plumes of vapor pouring out of students' mouths with no punishment at all. For me personally, using the bathroom is the hardest part of the day. Each day, I must ask myself the question on whether using the bathroom is worth sacrificing the health of my lungs, and this is no exaggeration. The vapor that is in that bathroom exceeds the hazy fog of an early morning. One cannot see, let alone breathe, in those conditions. Flavored tobacco has transformed so many youth's lives for the worse, and will continue to do so if unregulated. So please, council members, I beg of you to pass this ordinance to ban the sale of flavored tobacco for me, my peers, my classmates, your children, your sons or daughters, and truly for the greater future of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you. Very articulate.
Saharanya, then Dakara Johnson, then Lance Jiang.
Distinguished council members, mayor, and my fellow Sacramento residents, my name is Saharanya Shriram, and I'm a 16-year-old student at a local high school. I'm also a volunteer with Breathe California Sacramento. I'm here this evening to represent the youth voice on the issue of flavored tobacco. When I first overheard two of my classmates casually discussing their mango-flavored Juul pod order, I was shocked at how simple it seemed for them to get their hands on such an addictive substance. As minors, it's not supposed to be that easy for us, right? Well, according to a recent study from the California Department of Public Health, 2/3 of minors who use e-cigarette products purchase the device in a store or had someone else buy it for them. As a high schooler, I firsthand witnessed the complete surrender of teenagers to nicotine, all beginning with one flavored e-cigarette. The issue is not getting better in any way, and just last week, students at my high school were vaping in the classroom with no consequence. And for this reason, I strongly support banning the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including mint and menthol. As a city, we should strive to ensure that no teenager has the option to jeopardize their health through tobacco use, and I believe this begins with the city council voting in favor of the proposed tobacco retail license amendment that will effectively ban the sale of flavored tobacco use and protect my peers and myself from a dangerous but unfortunately appealing addiction. Thank you.
Kara, then Lance, then Jacqueline.
Hi, I'm here to state my support of the ban of the sale of flavored menthol, sorry, flavored tobacco and menthol cigarettes. I am 26, I'm married, and I'm having a baby at the moment, and I don't want, well, sorry, a lifelong resident of Sacramento as well, and I don't want my child to grow up in a, environment or a community where by the time they reach 10, 11, 12, that their friends are able to get their hands on flavors like chocolate and blueberry and raspberry-flavored tobacco. As I was stated before, that stuff is, sorry, those products are targeted a lot more in African-American communities. And also, my mother is a foster parent, and she has four foster youth that are between the ages of 12 and 17, and from speaking with them, I know that they've tried it already, and so that, that's how I know that they're, that it's targeting our youth, and so that's why I am in agreeance of the ban. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Lance, then Jacqueline, then Josh Brown.
Hi, my name is Lance Jiang, and I'm a high school student at West Campus High School. I'm here with my friends and peers from the Samian Youth Group in District 6. We are here because it is very important to us and affects each and every of us directly. I'm here today in support of an ordinance to ban flavored tobacco products in our community. Over the last year, there hasn't been a pronounced increase in vaping amongst teens. Unfortunately, though, this isn't surprising considering that tobacco companies make flavored products that are especially attractive to teens. Vaping has become normalized in high schools. Everyone in high school knows someone who vapes. It is also especially important to me and my organization as it very, very severely affects Southeast, Southeast Asian American communities. Tobacco is the number-one cause of preventable death among Southeast Asians, and I personally know many friends and relatives that use flavored tobacco products and don't realize the harmful effects of it. I'm here today to share the reality of life as a teen in Sacramento, and I'm here to ask you to, I'm here to ask you to vote yes on the flavor ban to protect me, my peers, and the youth in Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Jacqueline Dear, Josh Brown, then Diana Cassidy.
Hello, my name is Josh.
Hello, my name is Josh Brown with the American Heart Association here in Sacramento. And as we've heard today from the youth here, that e-cigarettes is the most commonly-used tobacco product among young people, mainly because they come in flavors that they like. Flavors like bubblegum, fruity pebbles, and watermelon Jolly Rancher are the exact hook is what's getting our kids addicted to these nicotine products. In 2018, 1.5 million youth started using e-cigarettes more than the year prior, so this is growing trend and epidemic that we really need to get a hold of right now. In 2006, a young study, or a study found that young people vape because friends or family members use e-cigarettes. They think that they're healthier, even though they're not, and the products are flavored. So we know that there's a big misconception about these products, and banning these products is one way to really get rid of this misconception that they are healthy, because we know that they're not. E-cigarette use among youth is associated with increased use of cigarette initiation and use, and for those who try to stop using, or those who try to stop using cigarettes as adults and switch to e-cigarettes, it often leads to dual use. My brother is one of those. He started out smoking in college, and then he tried to use e-cigarettes to quit, and he couldn't. It took him about two years for him to realize that it wasn't working, and then he had to switch to traditional ways to stop. So that is my plea, and I'm with the American Heart Association, and we support the ban on flavored tobacco.
Jacqueline Dear.
Good evening, I'm Jacqueline Dear. I'm a resident of Sacramento. I live in District 5, and I am applauding the fine work that was done under Council Member Shanier's leadership in the Law and Legislative Committee to draft this ordinance. It clearly puts the highest priority on health, especially for youth. We heard some wonderful reasons why, as well as it addresses a longstanding concern in the African-American community about the predatory marketing and targeting of mentholated tobacco products, which it turns out now are being heavily used by youth as their first introduction to cigarettes. So congratulations on getting the draft ordinance this far. To the arguments that you're going to hear about, you know, maybe it should be another level of government, maybe we should wait for the FDA or the state to act, I want you to set that thinking aside. If your council adopts this proposal, it places Sacramento at the forefront of city and jurisdictions willing to act in the interests of health. In fact, it maintains the leadership that cities demonstrated in the early years of California's landmark tobacco education campaign that was begun in 1993. Cities acted then, in the early days of that campaign, in the interests of their residents when the federal government and the state government couldn't, wouldn't, was otherwise constrained. So cities were really critical in expanding the protections to their residents from tobacco. So they were willing to forego the tax revenue that would be lost, and from the marketing and sales that would be lost. So the second argument is, you're going to hear-
Your comments, your time is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please support the argument.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Diana Cassidy, then Gabriel Espinoza, then Donald Lyman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Diana Cassidy. I live in District 4, and I'm a public health researcher. I'm here to tell you that the ordinance you're considering tonight reduces smoking among children and saves them from a lifetime of addiction. We know this because we've already banned flavored cigarettes in the United States, and it worked. In 2009, the Federal Food and Drug Administration banned the sale of flavored cigarettes because of their appeal to children. Dr. Margaret A. Hamburg, the FDA commissioner at the time, said in announcing the ban, quote, "These flavored cigarettes are a gateway for many children and young adults to become regular smokers." After 2009, the good news is that there was a 30% decline in youth smoking. The bad news, however, is that there was also a significant shift among youth smokers to menthol-flavored cigarettes, which were exempt from the FDA ruling. And at the same time, the tobacco industry flooded the market with flavored cigars and e-cigarettes. By voting for this tobacco ordinance you're considering tonight, Sacramento would stand with more than 182 cities and counties across the U.S. that restrict the sale of flavored tobacco products, including Chicago, New York, Boston, and Minneapolis. Just next door, in Yellow County, the Board of Supervisors passed their tobacco product regulation in October of 2016, which prohibits the sale of menthol and other flavored tobacco products with no exemptions. Please don't wait for the FDA or the state legislature to determine the health of Sacramento's children. Tonight, you can vote yes.
Gabriel Espinoza, then Donald Lyman.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for your time. My name is Gabrielle Espinoza, and I work and attend college at Sacramento State University. Stingers up! As the president of Sacramento State's Leadership and Tobacco-Free Advocacy Club, I have the ability to see vaping culture amongst college students in action on a daily basis. Vaping does not discriminate on our campus. From different ethnicities, social classes, and genders, vaping is utilized by a variety of students on campus. As a student, I spend a majority of my week on campus, both going to and from classes, also working on the campus itself. And as an asthmatic person, it becomes increasingly difficult to go from class to class every week, only to be greeted by a cloud of sweet-scented smoke in my face. With my position, it's not just me that I hear these comments from. I have heard similar complaints from numerous students and faculty and staff on campus, individuals who are concerned about the health and safety of our campus and our community. So I ask that you help us to keep our air smoke-free and support us in the flavored tobacco ban in our city. Thank you for your time.
Donald Lyman, then Rachel Alvarez, then Annie Tegan.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Donald Lyman. I'm here tonight to represent the physicians of the city of Sacramento, represented through their local medical society, the Sierra Sacramento Valley Medical Society, and its Public and Environmental Health Committee, and the State Medical Association, California Medical Association, through its council on science and public health, of which I am the chair. In 2016, there's a piece of paper there. Can we show that on the screen? In 2016, the Council of CMA requested us to produce a document summarizing the issues around flavored and mentholated tobacco products. This 29-page document is a professional scientific document. The attorneys will recognize this as our statement of fact. There are no conclusions. They raise the issues and describe them. Based on this document, we did our homework. There it is, 29 pages worth, lots of references. We've made a conclusion of fact, and our boards of trustees have recommended strong support that you vote in favor of the proposed ordinance before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, and thank you so much for your time. My name is Rachel Alvarez, and I both reside and work in Council Member Harris's district. As a health educator for alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs at Sac State, I spend a lot of time interacting with our students at various events. Once students learn that I work with tobacco prevention and education, I'm bombarded with questions about vaping. Is it safer than cigarettes? What is actually in the liquid? Is it addictive? How do they get it to smell like that and taste like that? Of all the questions that I get, the one that breaks my heart the most is when students ask, "How can I get my family member or friend to stop vaping and fully quit their nicotine dependence?" The students will often joke that they're going to leave our educational pamphlets all over the house, all over the dorm, under people's pillows, but underneath their humor lies a deep concern. Our students are smart and aware that the tobacco industry is creating new users, but feel helpless in their mission to assist their peers with living their healthiest, fullest lives. I urge you to do right by our young people and ban flavored nicotine products once and for all in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie Tegan, then Jim Knox.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name's Annie Tegan. I'm here with the Tobacco-Free Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, here to support ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes. We hear stories at Tobacco-Free Kids all the time about vaping from high school and middle school students all over the state of California. Last month, one student right here in Sacramento told me that his friends attach vape pens to their hydro flask water bottles inside the bottle to the straw, and they secretly vape in class through the straws while the teachers don't notice a thing. Another youth told me that youth wear vaping hoodie sweatshirts with a hidden tube in a pocket. Their jeweler vape pen is hidden in one pocket connected to one end while they inhale through the other end that goes through their hoodie. The youth have said that they're so addicted that they can't get through class without vaping. In addition to ending the sale of these candy-flavored vapor products, we strongly support ending the sale of menthol cigarettes. Tobacco companies continue to aggressively market menthol cigarettes to kids, African-Americans, and other demographic groups. As the only flavored cigarette left on the market, it's no surprise that menthol cigarettes remain popular among youth, who are more likely to use menthol cigarettes than any other age group. The Food and Drug Administration's Tobacco Product Scientific Advisory Committee projected that by 2020, 17,000 premature deaths will be attributed to menthol cigarettes, 4,700 of these in the African-American community. The greater popularity of menthol cigarettes is a direct result of decades-long marketing campaign by the tobacco industry that continues today. And this legislation is about trying to undo that targeted marketing. So on behalf of Tobacco-Free Kids and all Sacramento kids, we urge you to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jim Knox, then Eleanor Bimla Schwartz, and then Claudia Medina.
Mayor and council members, Jim Knox. I'm the managing director of ACS CAN, American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. That's the advocacy affiliate of American Cancer Society, and I'm a resident of District 5. I'd like to start by addressing some of the misrepresentations opponents may present a little bit later by pointing out some of the things that this ordinance does not do. It will not remove approved smoking cessation products from the market. That's because neither Juul nor any other e-cigarette maker has sought FDA approval as a smoking cessation project, probably because they know they're not going to get that approval. There are just too many studies out there that show that overall, smokers who use e-cigarettes are less likely to quit smoking than smokers who do not. That's because of the dual-use problem. This ordinance will not criminalize possession or promote racial profiling. There's no penalty for possession or purchase. Only the seller is subject to penalty. That's the case for this law. It's the case for all state law governing tobacco. Only the seller is subject to penalty, not the purchaser or the user. This ordinance also will not ban all e-cigarettes in stores, only the flavored products, which are such a powerful lure to the kids. Unflavored or tobacco-flavored e-cigarettes will still be available in retail stores. What this ordinance will do is allow Sacramento to join more than 30 other cities around California that have already adopted similar restrictions. It will help reverse skyrocketing rates of youth e-cigarette use. It will help thwart the tobacco industry's ongoing targeting and predatory marketing of menthol cigarettes to African-American and LGBT communities, and it will help reduce long-term tobacco use, which remains the single largest preventable cause of death in the United States, killing more people than guns, alcohol, and illegal drug use combined. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Eleanor Bimla Schwartz. I'm a professor of medicine at UC Davis Medical Center here in Sacramento, speaking today as a private citizen and not as a representative of the university. I'm here today to urge you to support the ordinance that's under discussion, having spent eight hours in clinic caring for multiple Sacramento patients who are struggling against the power of nicotine addiction, even while suffering from tobacco-related disease. I'm here today to testify that this legislation is critically important because smoking kills, but worse than that, it causes miserable, painful deaths. I'm here today as the mother of teenagers because flavored tobacco products, especially those that are vaped, are starter products for youth. Nicotine is addictive, whether smoked or vaped. And unfortunately, most youth who start smoking get hooked for life. There is strong scientific data indicating that teenage brains, even at age 18, are immature, leading teens to be more likely to engage in risk-taking behaviors, especially in social settings. By age 21, judgment has improved. Industry knows that their best customers are those they hook young. It's far easier to hook teenagers than young adults. Many are under the false impression that vaping is less risky than smoking. Sacramento families want this to stop. Our youth are our future. They deserve our full protection and smoke-free air. They deserve high-quality schools and neighborhoods where candy-flavored poison is neither marketed nor for sale. Thank you for making this a reality.
Claudia Medina, then Joel O'Rourke, then Carol McGruder.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Claudia Medina from the California Health Collaborative with the Hispanic-Latino Coordinating Center. The tobacco industry spends $9.4 billion per year on advertising their products. They invest a lot of money in marketing and promoting flavored cigars and cigarillos in predominantly Latino neighborhoods. Currently, there are more than 15,500 flavors of e-juice on the market. The tobacco industry has created flavored products that appeal to Latinos, such as orchata, churro, and dulce de leche. Flavored tobacco products are appealing to youth, and often the first product they use, which initiates their addiction to nicotine. Youth do not think these products are harmful because the flavor masks the harsh taste and smell. In California, 13.5 of Latino high school students use tobacco, and with e-cigarettes being the most commonly-used tobacco product. The U.S. Surgeon General has declared e-cigarette use among youth an epidemic. The use of e-cigarettes among youth poses significant health risks that could be avoided. I hope you take this information into consideration when making your decision. Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening, city council. I'm Carol McGruder, and I'm the co-chair of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. We are a California-based group of the African-American tobacco control advocates across the state, but we've been at the forefront nationally of the movement to get menthol taken off the market. When I look at the wonderful, beautiful children who've already spoken, I think about when I was a child, there was no such protection for black children in this country who were given Newport cigarettes as young as nine years old, like Marie Evans, the famous Dave Chappelle, who's rarely seen without a cigarette, was given free cigarettes when he was 14 years old in Washington, DC at the metro station. So I just want to encourage you to protect us. There's lots of talk about criminalization. What's criminal is what the tobacco industry did, and we're still living that legacy right now. And what's criminal is that when the FDA was given the authority to regulate cigarettes, and they took out all the flavors, they left menthol in, which 80% of African-Americans who smoke, smoked mentholated cigarettes. So it's not a coincidence. It's not just something because we just like menthol. We were preyed upon by the industry, and we encourage you to help to protect us the way that other citizens are protected in this country. I just want to encourage you, as other speakers have said, tobacco control is a grassroots movement. It's city-by-city. There are many things happening, but each city must continue this fight until we get to that tipping point. This is the capital of our great state, so when you go, the rest of our state will really also pay attention as a nation. We've got state legislation. There was federal legislation that's been introduced today by a congressman out of New Jersey, Ground Zero for Newport's in Newark and Trenton. So we encourage you to get on the right side and to set an example so that we have the rest of California, as California goes, so goes the nation.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Carol McGruder, then Lori Bemner. Thank you. Lori Bemner, then Christine Chessen.
I think I was before Carol. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Joel O'Rourke, and I'm the Tobacco Use Prevention Education Coordinator for Sacramento County from the Sacramento County Office of Education. I have a few data points to share that might be helpful in your decision-making. First, Sacramento high school student vaping has risen by 50% despite cigarette use dropping. Among 11th-grade high school students in the city of Sacramento's Schools District, electronic cigarette use increased by 50%, while cigarette use has decreased. Almost half of the 11th-grade students reported cigarettes were easy or very easy to obtain. And in Sacramento County, over 20% of 9th graders and almost 30% of 11th graders report having used electronic cigarettes or other vaping devices, and that's from the California Healthy Kids Survey. You've already heard tonight, over 80% of students who have used tobacco started with a flavored product. Nationally, levels of nicotine vaping have increased dramatically over the past year. Between January of 2017 and 2018, the percentage of 12th graders who report vaping nicotine during the past 30 days nearly doubled, from 11% to 21%. And among 10th graders, the increase was almost as great, 8% to 16%. And among 10th graders, the increase was almost as great, 8% to 16%. Beyond the survey data, students are using these products at school. They see them on digital and social media. We know that parents are concerned. Districts are receiving calls several times a week about students using these products, and they're asking for help and support. Parents and teachers may not be aware of what these products look like because they don't look like traditional cigarettes. You've heard they can be put into hoodies, on top of water bottles. With less aerosol and flavored odor, students are using tobacco products in the classroom, blowing it out under their desk or inside their shirts. Teens are promoting these products on social media, and they're putting together YouTube videos on how to not get caught vaping at school. Schools are needing help and support from us on this issue. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Lori Greenstein Bemner. I'm staying in North Natomas, District One. I'm with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm a cancer survivor, and I lost my dad to a miserable, horrible death due to a lifetime of smoking. I'm also the parent of three young adults, and I was shocked to find at my son's college home the other day Swisher Sweets and said to him, "I didn't think you or your roommates smoked." He said, "Oh, my roommates, they don't think they do. They roll out some of the tobacco they put in marijuana. They pull the marijuana through the flavored cigar, and they don't think they're actually smoking tobacco, but they are. So they go for the fun flavors, the mint, the menthol, the cherry, and they end up getting a lifetime of nicotine addiction." I find it really disappointing when I hear adults put profit and personal desires for a flavor above the need to protect kids from an addiction epidemic. We look to our local elected officials to make public health, especially that for vulnerable populations, a protection. Adult smokers don't need flavors, and it's disingenuous when they say that they do. They need the nicotine. You'll hear from sellers or users, they need the flavors. It's simply not true. And I'd like to see those sellers make their profits on selling a product that, when used as directed, doesn't kill you. I urge the passage of this comprehensive ordinance for public health. Thank you.
Chessen, then Kimberly Bankston Lee, then Lindsay Freitas.
Good afternoon. My name is Christine Chessen, and I represent PAVE, Parents Against Vaping E-Cigarettes, a grassroots movement of parents in California and across the country who advocate for a ban on flavored tobacco products. Flavored e-cigarettes are now used regularly by almost 4 million of our kids, including my own 18-year-old son, who's now facing nicotine addiction thanks to fun flavors popularized by Juul. My son admitted to us that if it weren't so readily available, none of us would do it. Kids where we live in San Francisco have told us that in some cases, up to 80% of their friends regularly use flavored e-cigarettes. It's normal. Everyone does it, they say. I remember my grandpa smoking menthol-flavored Cool cigarettes when we used to go fishing together and pleading with me never to start smoking. Now, 40 years later, I thought nicotine addiction was behind us and not something my generation of parents would be dealing with. But big tobacco snuck back into the addiction business through the tech industry's side door, luring millions of teens and young adults down this profitable path. Research shows that a kid who jewels is four times more likely to begin smoking regular cigarettes than a kid who does not jewel. Flavors are the bait that tempt kids into using nicotine. Flavors are in jelly beans and ice cream, but they do not belong in brain-harming tobacco products. While Juul Labs may claim that flavored vape products are a viable alternative to drive smokers away from cigarettes, a study cited by a UCSF tobacco researcher found that for every single one adult that switches from smoking to e-cigarettes, 80 young people between the ages of 12 and 29 will initiate daily tobacco use through e-cigarettes. Eighty. That's not a good trade. This isn't just bad for my son. This is bad for his entire generation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Kimberly Bankston Lee, and I am here tonight as a proud resident of Sacramento for the past 30 years. I brought my family with me. My mother-in-law wanted me to let you know that she smoked for 50 years. She suffered a stroke, and she says she is the reason why these products should be gone. I urge you to unanimously pass this ordinance. We, as African-Americans, live less years than other groups. We suffer more from chronic diseases. We die from violence disproportionately. Much of our fate is due to social conditions and policies, or lack of, that allow for us to be targeted or profiled. But we die most of all from tobacco-related diseases, more than any other causes of death, including AIDS, homicide, diabetes, and accidents combined. Tobacco and vape manufacturers have placed a target on our backs, and retailers are in the middle. This is not about putting retailers out of business. It is about limiting the drug nicotine that addicts and will eventually lead to the death of 45,000 African-Americans this year. This is about saving black lives. We are counting on you to end this in Sacramento now. Thank you.
Freitas, then Diamond Ling, then Stuart.
Good afternoon. Lindsay Freitas with the American Lung Association. I'm here tonight because I know that these products need to be taken off the market. Flavors are not just a tool used by the industry to hook kids, but they're a tool used by the industry to target the communities of color and our low-income communities. We need to step up and do something about this. I'd also like to take a moment to highlight the tremendous work of so many high school students, over 400 of whom have submitted letters to this council in support of this ordinance, because every day, they're living with us on their campus, and they really need you guys to step up and do something about it. The industry spends millions of dollars every single year marketing these products to our kids, and parents need your help to keep them out of our kids' hands. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Diamond Ling. I am a local pediatrician as well as a resident here in the city of Sacramento, and I'm here in support of this ordinance. As has been iterated here many times, the use of vaping amongst high schoolers increases their likelihood of developing a smoking habit later, and the use of vaping has increased from one year to the next, and overall nationally has increased by more than 900% since 2011. Now, the adverse effects of tobacco smoking is pretty well-known, and while the health outcomes for vaping are less well-understood, what is known is very concerning. Beyond addiction, per the report submitted by the U.S. Surgeon General, nicotine has a direct impact on the developing minds of our teenagers, increasing their anxiety, their irritability, as well as their impulsivity. In addition, recently, there have been raising concerns that e-cigarettes and vaping have been linked to cases of seizures amongst our teenagers, which is currently under FDA investigation nationally, as well as within our own city. There have been numerous cases of young, healthy, otherwise healthy, young teenagers who develop grand mal convulsive seizures soon after vaping. These teenagers had otherwise no known exposure to any other agents that have been linked to seizure activity. This ordinance will do a great deal in helping protect the health of our youth, as well as protecting their futures. Thank you for listening.
Ann Stewart, then Lori Comstock, and then Dr. Flo Kofar.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Dr. Stuart, Sacramento pediatrician and talking in support of flavored tobacco ban. Earlier this year, the Surgeon General said vaping is a youth epidemic. One in five high school students tried vaping in the last year. The number-one reason students report trying e-cigarettes is because of the flavors. When talking to local high school students last week, they report that whenever they are going to the restroom, there are at least 10 people huddled around vaping. The school day is often disrupted due to fire alarms going off. When asking whom the students think the flavoring is marking to, they report us. One student said if they were for helping adults quit traditional cigarettes, they would taste like normal cigarettes. You can be part of the solution today in slowing youth epidemic by banning flavored tobacco products. Today's SACB opinion piece by Jill Durand stated it right. Flavored tobacco targets kids, and addiction is the opposite of freedom. It's the latest chapter in Big Tobacco's long history of attempts to lower kids. Thank you.
I'm Lori Comstock, and I'm an individual who has lost many family members and friends to tobacco-related diseases over the years. This is my father. He started smoking as a teen and died from pancreatic cancer in 1963 at the age of 39. In those days, they did not relate smoking to pancreatic cancer, but they now know smoking is a risk factor for it. I was 13. My brothers were nine and 11, and my sister was only eight when our dad died. He wasn't at any of our graduations or family weddings and never knew any of his nine grandchildren. This is my sister. She started, let's see. This is my sister. She started smoking when she was 13 and died from lung cancer at age 44. Her sons were 14 and 17 when she died. She wasn't at their graduations or either of their weddings. Her oldest son was married three years ago, and they placed a red rose on the chair beside their father in memory of her. My sister was also, has also never met any of her five grandchildren. During her three-year illness, she lost all of her beautiful red hair and eyebrows. She was completely bald due to the chemo and radiation. She fought the cancer with all her heart because she didn't want to die and leave her husband and sons behind. This is one of my best friends. Her name was Debbie Austin. Many of you knew her as the woman who smoked through the hole in her throat in the anti-tobacco ads in the 90s. She started smoking at age 13 and got throat cancer at approximately 35. She quit smoking after those ads and started speaking to students at different junior high and high schools up and down the state of California and other states about the dangers of smoking and tobacco. I am sure she would still be doing that today, but sadly, she died approximately six years ago of a tobacco-related disease, even though she quit years ago. I have no doubt, if she were still alive, she would be here with me tonight, asking you to please take these addictive and deadly-flavored tobacco products off the market and think of the emotional, human cost to families.
Time is up, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Thank you for coming and sharing your story.
Next speaker is Dr. Flo Kofar.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Dr. Flo Jean Kofar. I am the Senior Director of Policy for Public Health Advocates, and I'm here to echo the sentiment that many of the previous speakers have already articulated, which is that this menthol ban is incredibly important for our city. It is a primary prevention tactic, which we definitely do engage in to make sure that we don't constantly see the shift in how these products are marketed and the things that essentially bring people to addiction future in the future in their lives. And so we know that these products are marketed at children. We've heard children come up and implore you to vote yes on this. So I will not belabor the point. I think we have many allies and advocates here today who are going to vote in favor of this. I just want to reiterate that there really aren't two sides to this issue. There really only is one. We have one side that's arguing we need to make more money, and we have the other side that's arguing in the best interest of children. And so I think we need to make sure that we are voting in a way that supports our values and that protects the health of our citizens. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Gibbs, Valerie Scruggs, and then Keyshore Kappa.
Tim Gibbs, I'm with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. I'm also a resident of District Four, and I wanted to thank the City Council for bringing this issue to the dais. This is a culmination of a two-year effort, and it's truly been a grassroots effort. Members of our tobacco coalition, we've gathered petitions, we've made calls, we've canvassed neighborhoods, and written letters. And this is one of the most important public health actions this council can take to save lives in Sacramento. Tobacco companies like Juul, Altria, R.J. Reynolds hate these policies because it means less tobacco be sold. You know, not even a year ago, R.J. Reynolds spent $12 million to overturn the exact same policy in San Francisco. And why did they spend that money? To preserve their Newport brand of cigarettes. You know, big tobacco is desperate to hook an entire new generation of consumers to their products, and unfortunately, it appears to be working. You know, in 2017, there were 3.5 million teenage e-cigarette users, and in 2018, just one year, there were 4.9 million teenage e-cigarette users. The FDA has rightly called this an epidemic. The Law and Legislation Committee asked industry to respond with a proposal, and their policy was truly a bad-faith proposal that did not even address flavored tobacco at all. In fact, it eliminated any reference to flavored tobacco out of the ordinance and even sought to weaken penalties on tobacco retailers. So you have the opportunity in front of you to do your part here in Sacramento. We urge an I-vote, not only for the policy to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products, but the policy that would limit the density of tobacco retailers. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Valerie Scruggs. I'm a resident of District One, and I'm also the Health Committee Chair for the Sacramento branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. The NAACP strongly encourages the city of Sacramento to restrict the sale of menthol and all flavored tobacco products, including vapes and e-juices. The target marketing and sale of these products near our schools and our neighborhoods where poor families and many African-Americans and people of color live is a social and racial injustice. Little cigars and menthol cigarettes are sold cheaper, and these products are advertised more in those neighborhoods than they are in higher-income neighborhoods. The NAACP recognizes that the council is under extraordinary pressure from the tobacco and vape businesses to put profits ahead of human life. Among Sacramento's total population of 495,000-plus residents, there are over 64,000 African-Americans and over 61,000 children ages 10 to 19 to consider when making this decision. Compare that to 340 tobacco retailers, including 30 or so vape shops that choose to sell products other than healthy products, but choose to sell products that, when used as intended, cause death and disease. Tobacco companies know they have to replace the smokers who are dying. We've heard from youth, we've heard from adults and other health professionals tonight, all asking you to stand your ground and to make sure that we have health for our children because the health of our kids and our families matter. If the council truly wants a healthier Sacramento, and we believe that you do, it's imperative that we follow through with this ordinance, restricting the sale of menthol and flavored tobacco products, requiring a minimum pack size of 20 for little cigars, cigarillos, blunt wrappers, increasing the legal age to 21 to purchase these products, and closing loopholes on the current buffer zone ordinances prohibiting tobacco retailers from operating within 500 feet of each other. We ask you to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Speaker is Keyshore Kappa, then Brian Cowan and Gregory Thatch.
Hi. My name is Keyshore Kappa. I'm here as a citizen who lives in District Five and as a physician who works at UC Davis, but don't represent UC Davis here today. I wanted to share a story of a patient I recently took care of. Jim was 56-years-old. This was his third time in the intensive care unit, requiring a breathing tube and a ventilator to help him take each of his breaths. Only a few days beforehand, he was at home feeling well with his family. Soon, his COPD, chronic lung condition due to lung damage from decades of smoking, became so severe that he could not breathe on his own. He had been smoking menthol cigarettes since he was 13. He was lucky that we were able to help him come off the ventilator this time, but before his hospitalization, he'd actually decided to try to quit smoking by vaping. Unfortunately, like many other people, he ended up continuing to smoke cigarettes while also vaping and ended up increasing his exposure to nicotine and the harmful heated flavored products and the e-liquid. For people like my patient, who have smoked for so long and are finally motivated enough to undertake the enormous challenge that it is to quit smoking, vaping offers a false hope. Electronic smoking devices are not approved for quitting smoking, and the evidence shows that they do not work. They continue to harm the body, including destroying lung tissue. We have many medications that do work and are not harmful. We need to support the people working hard to quit smoking by not letting them believe that the myth that switching to vaping is quitting. We have a responsibility to prevent another 13-year-old today from suffering like Jim and many others have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Brian Cowan is our final speaker in support, and then we move to Gregory Thatch in opposition.
Thank you for having me. I didn't think I would get here in time, so I don't have any script. But I'm here as a resident of District Four for about a decade and a father of a new baby girl of one years old. I just want to, I know they're gone, but thank the youth for being here. It's their voice, and they're the ones that this bill is really helping. I know the tobacco retailers, tobacco industry, even farmers, they have dedicated a good majority of their lives to a business that they don't want to see disappear, and they need to feed their families as well. But I just want to look at the full picture of the kids that start smoking when they're 13, 14, 15. They may get a chronic disease at age 40. They may have to live with that for the next 20 years, and then they They may have to live with that for the next 20 years and then they leave their families early. As a child, I grew up in a time when I would go to the convenience store, get a bubblegum cigarette, blow the powdered sugar out, get Big League Chew, put that in my mouth and thought I was a baseball player. And now, I never imagined it would get to the point where the tobacco actually tasted like Big League Chew, tasted like cotton candy. And we all know the addictive power of nicotine, how once you're hooked, it could take multiple efforts, seven, nine, 10, 11, and you may never get away from that addiction. So I just want to thank you for listening to all of us talk and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have 20 speakers in opposition. It's 8:00 PM. The first is Gregory Thatch, then Jamie Rojas, then Kavinder Chakkar.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. It's probably appropriate to be the first one here because we are representing 7-Eleven and they have tried very hard to support this ordinance. They are very much, their issues are related to underage vaping. Youth access to tobacco products are important to this council and they're very important to 7-Eleven. They want to support the ordinance but cannot do so in its current form because it creates unfair competition. There must be a recognition that allowing some retailers to sell tobacco while denying others the ability operates is a significant competitive advantage or disadvantage. There shall be a recognition by this council that businesses like 7-Eleven are serving neighborhoods by providing fresh food and life necessities. In some neighborhoods, 7-Eleven may be one of the only providers, particularly at off-hours. But a ban on tobacco based solely on proximity to a competitor or proximity to a smoke shop or a liquor store, none of which provide fresh food and necessities, is economically harmful, if not fatal, to existing stores, especially at the time of license renewal. We need to curtail the, this will curtail the creation of new stores and this may also have the potential to hurt, not help, many neighborhoods, especially with limited access to fresh food and necessities. With this background, 7-Eleven has proposed in addition to Section 3, which provides, and it's very simple, "This subchapter shall not apply to retailers with 5% or less shelving space for tobacco products and fresh food and non-alcohol beverage sales that are 15% or more of overall annual sales." We think it's a reasonable proposal to make. We encourage the council to adopt.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jamie Rojas, then Kavinder Chakkar, then Douglas Otter.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name is Hyman Rojas with the National Association Tobacco Outlets. We oppose a ban on flavored tobaccos as we urge committee members to vote no as currently proposed. 97% of Sacramento retailers have passed the FDA's annual compliance rate in the past two years. The retailers are not the problem, but part of the solution in stopping youth from accessing illegally tobacco products on checking IDs. Adulted consumers enjoy menthol, mint, and wintergreen cigarettes, cigars, smokeless tobacco, and electronic products. We respectfully ask that you not include these adult flavors. Banning flavored tobacco in the city of Sacramento will drive consumers into neighboring cities, onto the internet, and illicit market, where no one cares if you're under the age of 21, where the cities will be unable to conduct compliance checks, and we've documented this already in the cities of San Francisco, Oakland, San Leandro, and other surrounding communities. The city of San Francisco's Small Business Commission recently confirmed that 86% of youth obtaining tobacco products come about it in one of three ways: friends, other social sources, and online sales. Lastly, we ask if you do pass this flavor ban that we ask the council to allow one year for retailers to sell off their flavored tobacco products currently in stock. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kavinder Chakkar. I'm a local businessman. I'm a father of four children. I'm a grandfather. And as far as trying to listen to all these other young kids and bringing up here, one of my questions is, where are the teachers? Where are the principal? Someone's not doing their job and we're punishing small businessmen because someone else is not doing their job. At the last hearing at this issue, Councilmember Hanson asked staff about adopting a CUP standard in lieu of adopting a citywide ban. Staff replied, "The CUP runs with the land and the adopting such a standard would require the city to go to court and resolve any dispute." The city of Sacramento already requires any tobacco retailer within 1,000 feet of public or private K-12 schools to apply for a zoning app, which is an application included here, zoning administration special permit. This requirement is stated clearly on the city's tobacco retailer license application. Before the council votes on this ordinance, we would like an explanation about what rights do CUP holders have and whether they will be allowed to continue to sell flavored tobacco, regardless of what today's vote is. Their right to sell tobacco runs with the land. Councilmember Chenier also directed staff to provide counsel with the information on economic impact on 386 businesses that sell tobacco because of, he was concerned that the impact would devastate the small businesses. Councilmembers also asked to staff to survey tobacco retailers to find out what type of leases their business had. This information was provided to the staff, but I am told is not included in the staff report. The staff report makes no mention of this in the request. We would like to see these findings so we can discuss how citywide compensate, impact retailers if they decide to adopt this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Good evening, sir.
Douglas Otter, then Sam Bayless.
Well, not scared of much, but public speaking, I guess. I smoked cigarettes for 25 years and three and a half years ago, I got into vaping and I was done. I haven't had another cigarette since. I'm not coughing up mucus anymore. I'm not wheezing and my teenage daughter hugs me again, so I'm terrified of losing my daughter's hug. So I think that flavored tobacco and being used by the right person is crucial to living a longer, healthier life.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Next speaker is Sam Bayless, then Dilber Chakkar, then Berman.
Good evening, City Council members and staff. My name is Sam Bayless, representing the California Fuels and Convenience Alliance. The proposed ordinance prohibits the renewal of tobacco retailing licenses within 1,000 feet of another license holder. This will do irreparable harm to the businesses that are not eligible for the first renewal in their area, removing approximately one-third of the store's revenue. All existing license holders must retain the ability to receive a license. The city cannot choose winners and losers based on arbitrary renewal dates. I urge you to amend the ordinance to include a grandfather clause that will allow current retailers to renew their licenses and be able to sell their businesses with the ability to sell unflavored tobacco products. These community businesses are already going to be hurt by the proposed ordinance removing the products the council has deemed nuisances. Do not do further damage to these small businesses through a government taking of their annual city-approved license to sell legal, age-restricted products that have been approved by the FDA. At the law and legislation meeting, councilmembers told retailers, "You're smart. Find something else to sell." The proposed effective date of October 1, 2019 does not allow nearly enough time for business owners to plan and conduct the overwhelming changes that the council has asked of them. By allowing less than six months for a business to change their entire business model or even one-third of their business, the council almost guarantees the closure of these businesses. The typical lease runs five years, many of which are personally guaranteed. Six months is not enough time for the business owner to make changes or somehow seek relief that will allow them to continue to operate or break their lease. The city council increases the risk of driving these owners out of business, into debt, and potentially impoverishing their families under such a rapid implementation. I ask you to amend the proposed ordinance to grandfather end existing license holders with transferability or sale and to allow no less than 18 months for these businesses to sell their existing inventory and to make the necessary changes that will allow them to continue to operate. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Dilber Chakkar, then Berman Obadaga, and Sam Jurit Malmy.
Respected Mayor and all council members, my name is Dalbir Chahal, a local small tobacco and vape business owner from Sacramento. I came here to request you to exempt all smoke and tobacco and vape shops. This ban is not gonna help much because we are only 10% of the total tobacco retailers in Sacramento City. It will rather help for giving us exempt status and let folks who want to buy legally. Tobacco, flavored tobacco is not merely a few bottles of vape juice or a few Juul pods. It's rather a whole line of products, over 200 products. By banning flavored tobacco and vape products from an average store means not only taking away flavored tobacco sales, but also taking away a regular customer who also buy lottery beverage and other accessories. After losing nearly 60 to 80% of combined sales, there's absolutely no way for an average tobacco and vape shop to survive or pay bills, which have already lost significant sales due to 2017 cigarette tobacco increase and new 21-years minimum age. Our business proximity rule is also not a good rule because we are comparing to different business models. We sell tobacco paraphernalia where liquor stores and other grocery markets, they sell grocery and different items. So that's really not a good approach to close businesses by comparing different business models. We really strongly urge you to follow the steps taken by some other cities like Oakland and South San Francisco and exempt all tobacco and vape stores from any raw law or regulation related to this flavor ban. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I get a 17 minutes as well?
Obaldia.
Berman. Good evening, everybody, Mayor, councilmembers. Berman Obaldia, on behalf of the American Petroleum and Convenience Store Association. I just want to point out a few things. It seems like a fait accompli that this is going down, but I probably, I want to make it stressed to this council that the convenience store industry, not the tobacco industry, us members, convenience store owners in Sacramento, wanted to sit down. We reached out to the proponents of the initiative to discuss, have a meaningful dialogue, sit across a boardroom together and try and craft something that's reasonable and meaningful that won't be subject to loopholes and the black market. We reached out to members of the City Council. Some of us met, some of you met with us, others would not provide us a time. And when they did, they gave us very little time to discuss our proposal. We put a proposal. Now, it wasn't, it wasn't chiseled in stone. It was an opportunity for us to get together and try and craft something. We are members of the community here and some of us in these discussions vilify our industry. We have kids that go to school. We pay taxes. Seemingly, as a result of this, there's gonna be a revenue loss. Now, who do you go to? These are small business people, 42 potentially, that are gonna lose their inventory, they have to deal with that. If they've signed long-term leases, where do they go for that? And then the folks that they employ? Those are the ramifications that we're addressing here. As we talk about supporting small businesses, and everybody's down with that, but when the rubber meets the road, this is what's gonna happen. Potentially, these folks are gonna go out of business. It's a loss of revenue to our economy and that's what I would wanted to discuss with our members. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Obaldia.
Speaker is Samarjit, and then Les Light.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Samarjit Mali, a local tobacco distributor, and I oppose this ban. The California Department of Public Health Survey have revealed that in 2017, tobacco retailers had a 5.7% rate of sales to minors, a statistically significant drop from 10.3% in 2016. Because most kids obtain tobacco from social sources, this ordinance will do nothing to reduce the availability of cigarettes and e-cigarettes to minors. Tobacco is a highly regulated product, both at the state and local level. Banning the sale of flavored tobacco products will eliminate this product from licensed retail establishments that are subject to regulate federal, state, and local sting operations and create a robust illicit market, as we have seen in San Francisco and Oakland, where menthol cigarettes are being sold for $2 apiece and Newport cigarettes are fetching $15 a pack. The state legalized marijuana to eliminate the black market sales and ensure that the products being consumed by the public were subject to regulatory review. Why does the City Council want to dismantle the regulatory system in place for flavored tobacco sales? I urge you to keep all tobacco, including flavored tobacco, for sale at current licensed retailers. To do otherwise, will reverse the gains that tobacco control has made to prevent sales and access to youth. We would support a flavor ban on new tobacco licenses as businesses would know upfront what they can and cannot sell. We would support a flavor ban being imposed on any current licensees that are found selling any tobacco products to minors. If the council rejects our efforts at a compromise, we ask that you consider an exemption from the flavor ban for menthol, mint, and wintergreen, and that the effective date of the ordinance provides one year for existing retailers to sell existing inventory and figure out how to adjust their businesses to survive with a flavor ban. I thank you all.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Next speaker is Les Light. Next speaker is Les Light, then Noor Kachichi, then Faraz. Don't see Les.
Mr. Light.
Noor. Following Noor is Faroz, and then Rob Fong.
Respected Mayor and Councilmember, good evening. I've been on this podium a few times and I've talked about how vaping has helped a lot of our customers. As a retailer, I have first-hand information as to, we get consumers day in, day out that have benefited so much from vaping, but I'm not here to talk about that today because I've already spent a lot of time talking to you all about that. Today, I'm here because I'm scared. I'm nervous. I'm having sleepless nights. I'm scared that I might lose my business. 85% of my business is flavored tobacco and if the flavor ban does pass today, I will lose, I will lose my business. I'll lose my revenue. I'll lose everything that I've worked so hard for. I know no matter what I say today, I won't be able to convince any council members to change their mind because I know most of you all have already made up your minds. I stand in front of you today begging for mercy. I really beg for mercy from you all. We will lose everything we have worked hard for. We cannot survive the flavor ban. We have time left on our lease with personal guarantees. We may have to file for bankruptcy, even lose our homes, and even end up on the streets. I humbly urge you all to exempt tobacco shops and vape shops from this flavor ban. Stores like ours completely depend on selling flavored tobacco to stay in business. Cities like Oakland and South San Francisco have exempted adult-only establishments like stores like ours. We are not like big pharmacies, liquor stores, gas stations, or big grocery stores that have other stream of revenue coming in to stay in business. All we sell is tobacco products and core of that is flavored tobacco products. I request you all to not mix emotions into policymaking and if you do decide to move forward with this ban, I humbly urge, I request you all to at least give us 18 months to clear out our inventory. This will help us clear out our inventory.
For your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Faroz, and then Rob Fong.
Respected councilmembers and all the friends who have gathered here for and against. To be honest with you, I like what you guys are doing. I really appreciate that. I'm with you, but just the flavor ban alone is not going to help the, it's not a solution at all. People have been smoking cigarettes for, I think, two decades or three decades or five decades. Everyone agrees on that and it's a killer, but you guys are doing nothing to ban the cigarettes. You're just going after the flavors, which is not going to serve the purpose. It's not a solution at all. If you want to do it, do it in a full way, full-fledged way, that all tobacco products are banned and we are, as a retailer, I'm ready to accept that proposal and go out of business. I don't care. I can do something else, but doing the half-hundred attempt is not going to work. This is not the solution. We need to have ample time to figure out what we are going to do. We need to get 18 months. I'm 63-years-old and I'm wishing to retire. I cannot sell my business because I have created a lot of goodwill business value in the business and I'm not able to sell that business. This is not right for us, you know? So whatever you do, you do it in a right way, do it in a full-fledged way. Just banning flavor is not a solution at all. Thank you.
I have nine more speakers. The next is Rob Fong, then Lisa Carusco, then Stephen Greenhut.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Fong. I represent the Vapor Technology Association. It's the national marketing association for the vaping industry. First of all, I just want to thank Mayor and all the councilmembers. I think you've been very generous with your time. I've been able to meet with everyone multiple times and I know this is tough, so I appreciate the policy that you're deciding today. Just a couple of things. Sent you all an email earlier today, really wanted to kind of point out a few things. I won't go through the whole email, but the city of Sacramento has a lot of experience regulating age-restricted, the sale of age-restricted products and they've not regulating age-restricted, the sale of age-restricted products, and they've not banned any of those products. So find it concerning that we're choosing, the city is contemplating banning the sale of, and frankly, I'm just here talking about the flavored vape products. As far as I'm concerned, I think you should ban all cigarettes, frankly. I mean, one of the things that's going to happen if you pass your ordinance is that the only thing you can buy in the city of Sacramento in the tobacco field are unflavored cigarettes and tobacco-flavored vape, which is sort of curious. I mean, I think that's, to me, a big victory for big, big tobacco. So sent you a study that, from the tobacco control people, that showed that if people, if all the smokers switched to electronic cigarettes in the next ten years, one-point-six to six-point-six million fewer people would die. Sent you another study that's from the New England Journal of Medicine that said that a study showed that e-cigarettes are clearly the most effective smoking cessation device. So if you're, if you're going to go forward with, with the approval today, I would ask that you consider delaying implementation for eighteen months to allow folks who might go out of business to get their effects in order. I would also ask that you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
All right, Mindy, just one last thing. If the state and/or the feds come out with some laws or regulations, I would ask that you revisit your city policy to the extent that you're inconsistent with what they come out with. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Carusco, Stephen Greenhut, then Sohail Shoudri. I don't see Lisa. It's Stephen Greenhut. Following Stephen is Sohail Shoudri.
Mayor, council members. My name's Stephen Greenhut. I'm the Sacramento-based Western Director for the R Street Institute, a think tank that does work in public health and criminal justice reform. To achieve the mutual goals of both areas, we prefer harm reduction policies that move people away from combustible cigarettes, which are dangerous, rather than just banning things and then, you know, stepping up enforcement actions. Banning menthol cigarettes is a feel-good exercise that will not promote public health and will lead to unintended consequences. The latest data from the California Department of Public Health shows that less than one-point-nine percent of California high school students report smoking a menthol cigarette in the last thirty days. Menthol isn't driving underage tobacco use. All cigarettes, including menthol, are illegal for those under twenty-one, and since when do we ban legal products for adults to make it harder for people under the legal age to get those products? I mean, the analogy has been made before, but do we ban those sweet margarita mixes and those sorts of things? I, I just don't understand the logic. A ban on such cigarettes will not stop people from smoking, but will increase black markets for a variety of reasons, some related to past marketing practices. Minority smokers overwhelmingly prefer menthol products. I was at the Oakland City Council meeting when they considered such a ban, and some of the residents expressed concern that it will increase the sale of Lucy's, those individual cigarettes sold illegally on street corners. Residents also worried that it will increase unnecessary police intervention, and I know this ordinance doesn't criminalize possession, but we know how these kind of police efforts work. The National Black Chamber of Commerce and National Organization of Black Law Enforcement impose a menthol ban citing similar concerns over aggressive policing. We know the history of prohibition. When you ban things, people want, they find a way to get them. Black marketeers don't check ID, so we would argue that banning menthol cigarettes, that menthol should be exempted. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Sohail Shoudri, then Gregory Conlee, then Donald Woodsford. Sohail here. Gregory Conlee.
First, I'd like to ask you all to put your eyes on me, put your phones down, close your computers. It's rude to not pay attention. I've seen all you guys doing it, so please.
Please don't lecture us. Just give your testimony.
That's the point I'm trying to bring. You are not our parents. I'm not your parent. Don't tell us what we can and can't do. You tell your kids what you can and can't do. We don't, we don't tell, okay, now you're not paying attention again. You have to pay attention to me. It's my time. When it's your time, you can speak. So please. So I'm proposing a compromise. No one's talking about it because everyone's acting like kids. One side wants to do one thing, the other side wants to do another thing. I say get the tobacco out of the sight of kids. That's convenience stores, gas stations, any, any place like that. Then also, keep tobacco stores as adult-operated stores, twenty-one and up. Blackout their windows, don't allow them to advertise on their windows, don't allow them to advertise on their streetlights or their, or outside. That way, you keep tobacco businesses operational and you have your, no kids can see what's going on, just like how you do adult stores. All I have to say. All you have to do is listen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gregory Conlee, then Ronald Woodsford.
My name is Gregory Conlee. I currently serve as the president of a nonprofit called the American Vaping Association, and we advocate for sensible regulation of new reduced harm, tobacco harm reduction products, with the end goal being of maximizing the number of adult smokers who voluntarily switch to these products and improve their health. Forty years ago, in the British Medical Journal, Dr. Michael Russell wrote, "Smokers smoke for the nicotine, but they die from the tar. They die from the smoke." Our outgoing FDA commissioner, Scott Gottlieb, while recognizing that new policies are needed to discourage youth from accessing flavored vaping products, has also stated that if we could get every smoker to switch to vaping, that would be a huge public health victory. Again, the FDA commissioner, outgoing, respected by both sides of the aisle, if we could get every smoker to switch to vaping, that would be huge for public health. We know from CDC and FDA data that vaping products are not only the most popular cessation aid in the United States, the most used quit-smoking aid, but that they are also more successful than the gum, patch, lozenge, the ones recommended by many, many people in the room today. But unfortunately, deep-seated ideology keeps many people from seeing the reality. Up on the screen, that is from the UK Public Health Department, they are putting out bus ads through their Stop Smoking Clinic saying, "If you are a smoker, the most important thing that you can do, if you can't or won't quit altogether, is to switch." Please, listen to the people that are going to come up here to help, to tell their stories. Keep vaping products and new harm-reduction, smoke-free products available somewhere in Sacramento, or else more smokers will keep smoking and die. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ronald Woodsford. Ronald Woodsford, Tristan Taylor, and then Paul Rule.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of Sacramento City Council, and good evening to all of those that took time out of their busy schedules and lives to be here today that are in support of freedom of choice. My name is Ronnie, and for lack of a better term, a vapor. But there's more to it than that. I am an active member in my vape community, a community that has helped me to lengthen and improve the quality of my life and many others that have switched from traditional combustible cigarettes to a vaporizer option. And today, I am an advocate for this community that is in danger of being taken out by those with misinformation and a negative bias on a product they do not understand. I smoked for thirteen years and attempted all other smoking cessation options before trying vaping with flavored e-liquid over three years ago, when I was finally able to put down cigarettes. Mind you, vaping has been proven ninety-five percent safer than traditional cigarettes. Professionally, I am a substance use disorder counselor and addiction specialist. A big part of my job is taking the responsibility to teach harm reduction strategies to clients, much like how many California cities and state as a whole adopted the needle exchange idea to reduce the chances of the spread of diseases as a harm reduction technique. The idea of e-cigarettes with flavored e-liquid options is a harm reduction technique that has shown beneficial to those that have embraced the idea that reducing the amount of harmful chemicals entering into their lungs and body can extend their projected lifespan and eventually start to correct damage previously done by traditional cigarette smoking. Removing the options of e-liquid flavors will push many in this community that have regained their health into returning to the much more unhealthy option of smoking cigarettes again. What is truly more important here, a healthier community with a much better quality of life or the fear of loss of products from the big tobacco industries that thrives on keeping the community hooked on a deadly option? Please take our health into consideration and not the pocketbooks of those already flourishing from the death of their customers. In no way am I in support of youth getting a hold of these products, but a complete ban is reminiscent of prohibition, which did not work then. Why would it work now? Is this a flavor issue or a parenting issue?
Our next speaker is Tristan Taylor, then Paul Rule, then Brian Heacock.
Good evening. My name is Tristan Taylor, and as a, as a ex-smoker and current vapor, I'd like to protect children as well. The biggest issue we face today is banning e-cigarettes is not going to help. Parents are not taking responsibility for their children. I see on a daily basis, working in a vape shop, kids coming in and catching an attitude with store workers who just don't want to sell to these children. I have a daughter myself. I do not vapor on my daughter. I did not plan to smoke around my daughter. I do not want her to get asthma or have any lung issues. And quite frankly, I think more parents should tell their kids, teach their kids about these products, and teach them what they are for and what they are not for, and the fact that they're not for them. That's my time. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Paul Rule had to leave. I'm Tristan Hannah. I'm here to speak as a customer and a consumer once again. Thank you for having me back. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Unfortunately, I feel like a lot of what's going on right now is just misinformation campaigns on misinformation campaigns. Listening here to the different statistics and the different percentages and numbers that have been put out, they're consistently and constantly changing, over and over and over again. I'm hearing seventy percent numbers, eighty percent numbers, ninety percent numbers, sixty percent numbers. Nothing seems to be consistent. Nothing seems to make any sense. The only thing that does make sense to me is the fact that they're saying that there is a direct correlation between the rise of teenagers and middle schoolers vaping and a decline in cigarette smoking. The only reason for that is because prior to two thousand nine, vaping was not a thing. It was not a product that was out on the market that was readily available to everyone else. Everybody was smoking cigarettes. My mother, my grandmother, my grandfather, my great-grandfather, all started smoking at young ages. I started smoking at fifteen years old back in two thousand twelve. This is three years after vaping hit the market, and yet I was still there smoking Marlboro Red cigarettes. Okay? Teenagers and middle schoolers will get their hands on whatever they want to get their hands on, whether that be alcohol, marijuana, okay, party drugs, okay, vaping, or cigarettes. They will get their hands on it, and they don't want to listen to parents. Okay? I didn't want to listen to my parents, but I can't tell you how many times I have sat there, looked myself in the mirror, and said, "Why didn't I listen to my dad when he told me something?" They were right. This is something that we have to sit down. People have to talk to their children. They have to educate children. We need to be throwing them out of stores. We need to be restricting it where they can't get it. Because the last thing that any of these people, any of the stores that I have gone into, want to do is sell to children. That is not a goal. The goal is cessation of smoking and helping adult smokers get away from it. This is the only product that has worked for so many people, and if we're going to talk about deaths, four hundred thousand people die from smoking every year. Two in the last ten years have died from vaping. Thank you.
And our, our final speaker is Brian Heacock.
My name is Brian Heacock. I'm not going to bore you guys with anecdotes about my business. I know you guys don't care about that. If you guys consider me a death merchant, then I should be out of business. I'm not going to parade a hundred people through here with a boilerplate written statement about how vaping has helped mom and dad not smell like ashtrays. You guys don't want to hear that, and I don't want to bore you with that. I do want to thank you guys for your time today. Real quick, I have a series of peer-reviewed studies from around the world. Drexel University, Oxford University, various publications, both national and international, showing that vaping is helping people quit smoking, adults quit smoking, the importance of flavors in vaping. These things are absolutely imperative to the support that we have as a community. Vaping helps one out of every two people who picks it up quit smoking. The anecdotes that you're hearing about dual use and about vaping not helping people quit smoking, about people who pick up vaping becoming dual users, or people who pick up vaping who've never smoked going on to, to smoking, most of those numbers are complete falsehoods. Forgive my language, but they're bullshit. The UCSF study that showed eighty people pick up vaping for everyone that quits, seventeen million Americans have quit smoking using vaping, seventeen million. You cannot tell me that three-point-one-three billion people have picked up smoking in the United States, where we only have three-hundred-and-twenty-five million people. It's not possible. These numbers are loaded. It is part of, it is a part of a false narrative to feed you guys bad information. Four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand Americans will die this year from smoking, four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. That would be the equivalent of the population of Sacramento dropping dead this year. Vaping is helping those people live longer, better lives. Five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three teens died last year from auto accidents, forty-five-hundred last year from alcohol. How many teens died from vaping? Zero. It's a false narrative. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to both sides for, I think, very good testimony and laying out, laying out the issues. I want to now turn it back to the city council for discussion and deliberation. I'm going to start with council member Steve Hansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, and I want to thank the audience too for a very thoughtful conversation. This is, I think, the third or fourth time we've been in a hearing on this item, if you count the past publication where the industry showed up and spent an hour and a half talking to us, like the folks about rent control did earlier. And I, I think this is a really healthy conversation, if you excuse the expression, because this is a really important debate, not only for our communities, but particularly for our kids, for people who live in disadvantaged communities or, like me, who's LGBT, who feel targeted by some of these products, we have to have this conversation, and it is long overdue. The ordinance before us really does two things. One, it reforms our tobacco retail licenses, license policy, which is very lax, has very little requirements, and really brings it up to a modern standard. And there's a lot of sort of conversation about the distance requirement and this and that, but I, I think that when you look at the map, these licenses congregate in communities that are vulnerable, and the data is pretty clear, and I think we have to take that seriously. The other piece is really about flavors. Some of the speakers made it seem like we're banning vaping altogether, that those products wouldn't be allowed in the city. Only flavors are banned under the proposal. Vaping itself is still there. The FDA has not opined on it as a cessation tool, so, you know, coming out of the medical industry, working for a large biotech company, it's really important to have peer-reviewed data if we're going to make those kind of claims. We do not have data to support those claims, and we don't have data to, to show us what the long-term effects, which is sort of the gold standard, is a peer-reviewed, double-blind standard. But we do know, as we've got really powerful testimony from members of our community who say they're being targeted, they're disproportionately affected, and I don't think we can walk away from this thinking that we shouldn't do something to help them. Indeed, you know, it's not lost on me, we've had this whole conversation over the last year about equity and particularly communities of color, and while we work on new approaches through inclusive economic development, while we work on reforming other pieces of city infrastructure, we have a public health obligation here to really help, help by stepping up and getting to some of the social determinants of health, and this is one that we have control over. There's no doubt about that. Our staff have done a wonderful job here. Carl, I don't know if you're going to be before us again before you leave. Carl Simpson, the head of our code enforcement department, has announced he's taking a big promotion in Dallas, which I hope you enjoy Texas. You may need a hat, a really big hat. But I want to thank you personally and your whole team. Jose, Tina LeVote, who's not here, did a phenomenal job. Madam City Attorney, your team did a great job as well, and this has been a long-running process. And, and the advocates in the industry, maybe in this sort of Fantasia-like dance for a long time, because these are unsettled issues. But when I was a kid, my grandma Hansen and my grandpa Hansen, they were dying of emphysema and smoking-related cancer. They died within a year of each other when I was six and seven. But I remember the oxygen tanks. I remember the hospital beds in our little, in the little house that they lived in, which I eventually lived in, and those beds carried through because we didn't have money for stuff like new beds. And then my uncle Jim died at forty-four of a massive heart attack related as well to his smoking habit. I can't help but forget, as somebody who's of a certain generation, the real impacts of addiction and smoking on them and what it made me feel like. My mom smoked when I was a kid. She still sometimes reminds me of this, but I would take her cigarettes and break them and flush them down the toilet because I don't know if it was because of and flush them down the toilet because I don't know if it was because of what happened to my grandparents or the fact that I just didn't like the smell and how it made me feel because it gave me a sore throat. But I used to get in trouble for doing that and it took her a long time to quit. I was not successful in my strategy of disrupting her. But, but whoever we save, however we save them, I think that this is a worthy effort and I, I really do respect the, the position of the retailers who are trying to figure out how to make it work. And I think as we discuss this and the debate tonight, you know, is this perfect? No. I think the ban is actually really solid policy. Thousand feet, is that always going to work? How we manage that, I think is important. But I also think that we've always been responsive to learning new information. And if, if we need to adapt and change on the tobacco retail side, I think we need to, I do want to address this idea that came up several times about a conditional use permit. It's a very legalistic term and it creates a property right that essentially runs with the land. A lot of liquor stores have this and it means that that property is worth more because it's legally allowed to sell in perpetuity a product, particularly alcohol. If we did it for tobacco, guess what? That store and that permit to take it away would require so much effort, so much evidence and court proceedings that is virtually impossible to take away. And I don't believe that's the strategy that we should be using here to regulate in this particular space. In the end, you know, I really appreciate the time my colleagues took to, to review this, to be thoughtful, to, and you were going to hear a debate here. But Scott Gottlieb, who's leaving as the FDA Commissioner, probably signed his own expulsion from the Trump administration by taking on vaping. Issued notices and letter, warning letters to companies like Juul because of their tactics. They've, they've been trying to respond to that, but it doesn't seem like we've truly gotten to the bottom of it. I hope that as, as the FDA, you know, keeps moving, that they resolve it at the national level. I hope that the state and Jerry Hill and the members of the legislature who are working on this at the state level, that they are successful. And so we've put into this October 1st implementation date to give the state an ability to do something at the state level. So it's not unfair competition and all those kinds of things. We set one state standard, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's in our interest as a city for the communities that we're trying to help to just sit on our hands and wait. And this is the time to do it. And Kimberly and Tim and Jim and all the people here, Dr. Koffer, Gopher, I really appreciate the leadership from the community up that you've demonstrated because it was very compelling. And there's no way that we could have this conversation without you in the room. So I, I would like to move the staff recommendation.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Councilmember Shinir.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be relatively brief here, but I do want to, I want to thank Councilmember Hansen for his leadership and all the work and his staff. Matt Reed, who I think hasn't slept in about six months worrying about this item. Few things, and I, I don't think I need to add anything on the content. There's been quite a bit said and I know there will be more by my colleagues as it comes. For me, I've wrestled with this decision for a long time and I've spent a fair amount of time with both sides of the issue, people representing both sides of the issue. There's never been much of a doubt for me about whether or not we should allow the product. And so that was an easy one. The difficulty for me as a business person, as a small business person, is what happens to people who have staked their livelihoods on this and, and the fact that at some level it's changing the game midstream, where you've done something that's been legal, you have a shop, you're earning a living for your families, and is it right to change the game and say, "You can't do that anymore"? I, I wrestled a little bit with the idea of a black market coming in to replace us, although we have other examples and I think we're doing pretty well on some of the other examples, so I have faith in our police department to be able to, to do a good job there. And I also did ask about revenues to the city. Some of that is difficult to measure. It's probably going to be a couple million dollars that we'll have to make up. But kind of the bottom line for me actually came, I think my La Familia kids are still there or they've left. I can't see behind everybody. But in a meeting with a number of, you guys are pretty young, but you're not quite there. But meeting with, with the La Familia groups and some other groups of young people who were very clear about what they thought was being done, who was being targeted, and kind of the results of that and what was happening to their friends was really the swaying factor for me. And, and kind of just trying to figure out bottom line, what's the right thing to do here and understanding that it will be difficult for some and that we'll have to continue to look at this. So I, I'm going to support this motion. I'm going to ask for a couple of things as friendly amendments for the, and I believe it's 42, that businesses that are primarily vaping or smoke shops and maybe we can figure out how to define that if it's 85% of your product or more is kind of what I've heard, but I'd ask you to take a look at that to, to provide a little bit of extra time because not only do they have to dispose of the product, but I think a lot of those folks have leases that may even have personal guarantees on it. And we don't want to, we don't want to put people out of business in that format. So I'd ask that we extend by three months at this point, the ability for those folks to continue operating. So that would be a January 1st implementation date for the ordinance for that subset of, of businesses. I'd also ask that we, assuming that the state takes an action, that we come back as we did with minimum wage and take a look at it and see how we align with the state action, if there are things that we need to tweak or, or not. I'd also ask if, if staff can, at that point, and so that would be at the beginning of October, once legislation is signed or not, or end of September, beginning of October, that we also get an update on these businesses. I'm less, I know the convenience stores will also be hurt by it, but frankly, I'm less concerned about that because it's a relatively smaller percentage of their business. But for those who are doing this almost at 100%, could we see, get an update on where they are, how many of them are still in business and what they're doing? And my office would be happy to work with you and, you know, whether it's a questionnaire or survey, however we do that. But I'd like that information to come back to us at the same time that we're looking at what the state has done. And I think that would give us an opportunity to see the impacts of, of the decisions that were made.
Okay. Is that, that's a request for three, three friendly amendments, January 1, 19 for the 42 vape-only shops.
January 20.
I'm sorry. January 1, 2020, thank you. To come back to the council if the state takes action and three, survey if you will.
Either way, to get an update.
To get an update.
On the 42 and where they are at that point.
Mr. Shinir, thank you for your comments. I think that, and the mayor knows this, but most state laws take effect January 1st anyways. So maybe we should just make the effective date January 1st overall to ease simplicity. And, and that way, if they do pass something, the signing period, as I was sitting here thinking about it, could go into early October. So that would give us about.
Is it end of August or September 15th this year?
It's, it's usually the signee dies late August.
Yeah, late August, so it'd be September 31st.
Yeah. So October 1st implementation doesn't give us time to come back.
Well, I'm not worried about the state implementation as much. We'll know what they're doing, but I'm happy to say we'll do the whole thing January 1st.
So you're saying the effective date of the entire ordinance is January 1st?
I think that just makes it easier.
That's fine. And it also means we're not treating different people differently.
And then KCRA and the B can write the January 1st story with all the other new laws like they do.
We don't want to make it difficult on that.
Okay.
I would do that.
And the other stuff is, is okay by me.
Let's take a look at what they're doing and get an update around October 1st of what they want.
That's been accepted by the maker of the motion and by the seconder?
I'll concur with the changes.
Okay. So that's the, the, the main motion has been amended through friendly amendment. Vice Mayor Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first, I want to thank again Councilmember Hansen for taking a lot of time on this and the staff as well for, you know, for their dedication in, in pushing a lot of this. We had a lot of hearings. I also want to thank all the advocates who, even before we started moving on this, have been persistent, persistent about educating our offices about these issues. I remember the first time I sat down with our advocates and they showed me the map of, of my council district and saw the proliferation of some of, of the retail facilities. And when you overlaid them also with other factors like access to a good grocery store, full grocery store, air quality impacts, health impacts, they, they unfortunately aligned at the same time also. And, and for me, I think that was a, an eye-opener. And then to find out even worse, that our schools and our kids were, were getting more and more of this usage, which we had not seen, it was a reminder that we as a government entity had not evolved with the technology that had come before us. And, you know, so again, I'm not, I'm not a doctor and, and, but I, but I do want to thank our doctors that came here to testify. I want to thank Dr. Ronald Lyman for, you know, and your, the leadership of your organization to, to actually, you know, drill down on the science and on the facts and, you know, it was, the report was 2016, we're in 2019. And, you know, in that timeframe, kids have been impacted by that. And so that, that's not lost on me. But I do want to thank all of you for, for that work in our local doctors who, who've taken that advocacy role. But what I do know, as someone who was addicted at a, at a young age, and I mentioned this before in the Law and Legislation Committee, is that it was the flavors that, that got me hooked on tobacco, on nicotine, to be specific. Let's be specific here, on nicotine. And it was the menthol, so, you know, at that time. And that was in the fourth grade, so when I saw that young girl here testifying and, you know, she was only, you know, four years younger than when I first started using tobacco. And 25 years later, continued to use it, smoking. And, and if it wasn't for, you know, my wife and the love of my wife and being aggressive about not wanting to make sure that we both grew old together, that I quit. But it was, it wa, it was painful. I mean, nicotine is, is a powerful, powerful addictive drug. And so what, what we're, what we're talking about today and the reason this conversation came about was not about limiting choice of adults, but the fact that even with everything we've done, young people now are on the rise of being addicted to nicotine. We do know, we do know that when we limited flavors, the effects on youth dropped significantly. That's something we do know. And this new technology came into play and it increased those numbers dramatically. I want to thank the, the Semien community, the Semien Youth Group that came in from the Yumian Community Service Center from District 6, because they also expressed how many of their youth, many of their colleagues and classmates completely saw vaping and flavored vaping different than a Marlboro Red. They, they didn't compare the two at all. They're like, "Well, we don't do that. That's, you know, that's, you know, why would you, why would you do that? We know that kills you." But the fact that at a young age, kids are, are being drawn to this, it's been the flavor. It's been the flavor that's been the source. So that's one of the challenges that I, I brought up was, you know, if we're move, if we're going to try to, to move a policy forward, what is it that we're trying to tackle? We're trying to tackle the substance that is getting to the youth, the, the source of addiction. We're not eliminating cigarettes here. We're not even eliminating vaping equipments and products here. We're eliminating the substance that we know and have known that addict young kids, and that's flavors. The mangoes, the horchatas, the juicy fruits, whatever you want to call it. And that, I think, is the biggest issue because once you're addicted to nicotine, and, you know, I want to thank Senator Pan because when he talked to me, I had no idea about the impacts on the developing brain and early use of nicotine. I mean, to that, that shocked me about my son. I mean, I don't want him to be, to be affected by that. So I want to thank all our youth who are here, La Familia, the Yumian Community Service Center, for bringing that issue. And, and the fact that we, we need to do something now. I do want to also, again, like Councilmember Shinir mentioned, many of our business owners here have, this is their livelihood. They sell their businesses to retire. You know, this in many sense are their pension plans. And, and to me, I, that's not lost on, on, on me either, which is why I'm willing to extend the timeframe to the, to the end of the year and accept that, because we have to be able to help folks transition into something so they don't lose their livelihood. But at the end of the day, we have to think about the long-term, 25 years in my situation of addiction of young kids. And that's, you know, my parents didn't want me to get addicted to tobacco or any of that. They wanted the best for me. But I had no idea, no difference in, in the fourth grade, whether that was, whether chewing skull bandits would lead me to using Copenhagen or Marlboro Reds or Camel Crush or any of those. So with that, you know, members, colleagues on the council, I, I want to, I want to, you know, urge you to, to think about this and, and support this motion. I do want to ask that our staff, and I brought this up in the Law and Legislation Committee, look that on our platform, our, our policy, both on state and federal platform, under the health issues and enforcement of illegal activity. I do believe that SB 39 would probably fit under that, which would go after the online sales. And what we do know is that there is some small amount. It's from my understanding, it's still retail locations where folks are getting this. But I want to also assist in getting to the point of eliminating that loophole of the online sales. So, and if Senate Bill 39 from Mr. Hill would, would help assist in that, I hope that our city would join in that effort. With that, I, again, I want to thank everyone here. I do hope that we can find and also be proactive in a way to help these businesses transition, but we have to put our students first. And with that, I encourage you to not vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shinir, I think your amendment makes us better, but still not good enough for me. I think it's a step in the right direction in trying to protect small businesses. I support protecting our children from all harm, to include nicotine, but from all harm. But I can't support this ordinance as it's written. You know, those who do not learn from the past are doomed to make the same mistakes. And I don't think we're learning from the past here. In 1919, the 18th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution was ratified. And this is no small task. You have to get a supermajority in the House and the Senate, two-thirds, and then you have to get three-fourths of the people in the United, of the states to adopt it. It was a very popular amendment. It was called prohibition. And I can just imagine the discussion and the debates at that time. A line of people coming in talking about their loved ones were addicted to beer or wine or alcohol of some type. I can imagine the doctors coming in talking about liver disease. I can imagine the social scientists coming in talking about spousal abuse. This amendment was very, very popular. 14 years later, only 14 years later, that, the 21st Amendment was ratified. And what it did is nullify the 18th Amendment. That's how fast things change around. Just 14 years and we got two-thirds of both houses of Congress and three-quarters of the states. Even closer to home, right here at this council, because of a long line of people talking about the abuses of Walmart, this council banned big box retail. We said, "You can't work in this city. You got to go somewhere else." They went somewhere else. They went to the other cities. They went to the county. They got all the sales revenue from it and we did not. And it wasn't until the Delta Shores Project that's going in right now, that this council nullified that ban to box. History has taught us that prohibition- History has taught us that prohibition does not work. In case after case, prohibition does not work. But we do know what does work. We know education works. We know taxation of those businesses, of those products that are harming us, and we know regulation works. We know these things work because they're working with cigarettes. Cigarette usage is down from 40 to 14 percent, and that's exactly the way we did it. We educated, we taxed them, and then we regulated them. I do not believe that the only way to restrict access to vape products and flavored cigarettes in Sacramento is to completely ban them. I do not believe that. We already do it with alcohol. We already do it with cannabis. We regulate who goes into the store, who can purchase the product. It's almost like picking winners and losers at Rayleigh's, like going into Rayleigh's and saying, "Donuts! We have an obesity problem. Let's ban donuts." Potato chips! Our kids are eating potato chips. They're marketing to our kids. Let's ban potato chips, because we have an obesity problem, especially in the minority community. Alcohol and beer probably hurt more people than anything else in this country, but we don't ban it. We tax it, we regulate it, and we educate our population on it. What about the cars that we drive? The emissions from those are killing us. They're choking us, literally. We're not banning cars. Nobody would even think of that. We tax them, we regulate them, and we educate about their use. To me, this ordinance doesn't pass the LAUGH test. L-A-U-G-H. It does not pass the LAUGH test. You mean to tell me we pass this, and you can smoke an unfiltered Camel cigarette, a Winston cigarette, but you can't do a vape, and you can't do Salem's or Coos, but at the same time, you can smoke cannabis? You can smoke marijuana? I think we need to rethink this. I think we need to rethink this whole approach. I think in a lot of ways, we're swinging in the dark. We don't know how our businesses are going to be hurt. We don't know if they need one year, six months, or two years in order to get rid of their current inventory. Let's learn from our past and figure out how to do this. Let's do this in a way that we're not back here a few years from now talking about repealing this and going to something else after we've hurt a whole bunch of people. And at the same time, there are many, many ways that we can protect our young people from these products on this one little island of Sacramento, when they can go to Elk Grove, they can go to Rancho, they can go across the street to the county. Let's figure out how to protect our young kids without doing a prohibition and making the same mistakes that we've made in the past. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some comments, but before I speak to my own comments, Councilmember Warren called me this afternoon and asked me to read a statement for him. First of all, he wanted to postpone this because it's a really important vote to him, but because Councilmember Hanson had made special arrangements and flight arrangements to be here tonight, and that was explained to Councilmember Warren, he agreed to go ahead and allow it to go tonight without making that request. He had a very close family friend pass away. The memorial service is today, and Councilmember Warren is actually a pallbearer, so he could not be here. He did join me back in 2016 as an early supporter of this, when Twyla and Kimberly came to see us. They actually came and saw Councilmember Warren and myself, and we had a robust dialogue about this in September of 2016. And Councilmember Warren was an early supporter in banning products particularly marketed to kids. He said that he would like to help. His priority is kids. He wanted to make it clear that it's all kids, while acknowledging that black youth in particular are disproportionately negatively impacted, as well as poor neighborhoods like the one he serves. He believes that adults should be able to do what they want, and he is a businessman himself. But he says, "We just haven't done enough to protect our kids." He says it's overdue, and that while he is pro-business and does not believe that flavored tobacco products should be allowed, because targeting kids is inappropriate and unacceptable as a business practice. I think he would also add that, as a businessman, he would support Councilmember Shenear's addition to this item, so that folks have a bit of time to address their existing inventory. And I think he would also give you the example of himself being a business owner who dealt with something similar during the recession, where their businesses were, in many ways, lost around the housing market when it went under, and that sometimes businesses go through these really difficult challenges. And it is an opportunity for us, as I think Councilmember Gera very eloquently said, to work with you, to try to help put you in a better spot as well. But for us, it's a balancing act, and I think Councilmember Warren would say, he airs, as Councilmember Shenear said, on the side of the kids with this one. And while I don't have a proxy vote for him tonight, and none of us do, he wanted to be on the record as supportive of the item. He also requested an opportunity to vote on Title 17, the CUP item, in addition to the Title V issues. He believes the CUP is a critical tool for council members and city staff to be able to direct the location of the future tobacco retailers that would come into his district. He would like to have a voice in helping select the most appropriate areas of his community for those retailers. Those are Councilmember Warren's comments. Thank you for allowing me to read those. I know it was really important to him. And Twyla and Kimberly, he particularly wanted me to tell you two, thank you very much for your advocacy, and he's sorry that he couldn't be here. Okay, as for me, this item, interestingly enough, has had a really long and interesting life, and I want to thank Councilmember Hanson. I don't have the privilege of being on Law and Legislation, so I asked for this item, but then, you know, it goes to Law and Ledge, and you have to hope somebody there will take it up and work on it and do the best they can. And I think all the members of Law and Ledge owned this and met with you all and tried really hard to come up with a compromise. I can prove it, because when the mayor and I talked about this in August of 2017, I really wanted it to come back, and I was adamant with him that it needed to come back, and we asked for it to come back in two weeks. So here we are, two years later. And we have, which just tells me they grappled with it as best they could and tried to bring back something that we could vote on. And, you know, for me, as happens often, I am the mom. I am a mom, and I am the only female on this city council. And as a mom, the top of my mind is always the kids, in particular in my district, in my house, in my family. I would like to share a little bit about this timeline, because it's not just accidental. When I met with these ladies in September of 2016 and we started the conversation, it started around kids. And then there was an extraordinary incident in my district. A tobacco shop, a little tiny local tobacco shop, started having a lot of criminal activity, including a Bay Area gang coming in with masks on, holding up people at gunpoint. And those images were on television to try to identify who those gang members were. This is in an internal part of our community, right next door to two daycare centers, and it was very scary. And so the first half of my impetus to ask for this to be looked at was at the request of Seoul. But the second half, relative to the CUP, was about the retailers in my district that were popping up everywhere and me not having control over where they would be. I couldn't control how close they were to daycares, and there's nothing in this that changes how close they were to daycares or schools, and that bothered me. And then I asked for it again in August, twice in August, and then again in September. And then in October that year, my friend died, in her early 30s, with three young sons. She was a smoker, and she died of cancer, lung cancer. And then we buried her. And then I asked again in November to bring it back quickly. And it went to the Title 17 portion, the CUP portion, went to the Planning and Design Commission, where they passed the CUP, 11 to 2. And then it went back to Law and Ledge, and the Law and Ledge team focused on Title V, which is what's in front of us tonight. I will absolutely support what you brought forward on Title V tonight. I think it's important work, and, you know, I think the stats that matter the most, while everything that everyone has said is important, is the incredible increase in the number of kids becoming addicted to nicotine. It really needs to be a focus for us, and we have to figure out how to address that. I did have the opportunity to work with Sac State students when they became the first smoke-free campus. Sometime, I think it was before you were even here, Eric, but they worked hard on that rule, and then later, this whole CSU system followed. And so now all CSU schools are supposed to be smoke-free campuses, and I think that that is the kids leading the way, which many of you have already talked about. It's the students leading the way, Sac State kids, leading the dialogue years before we even came to it, and I think that, too, is impressive. So I did want to ask you, and only because I didn't hear you say it and I wasn't sure if it was in there, and I'm okay either way, but did you intend to include the requested exemption for pipeline projects?
Mr. Mayor, with your...
Is that okay?
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for your comments. There are probably some technical cleanups that will have to be dealt with later. I don't have a red line on anything related to pipeline projects, but Mr. Thatch raised that issue earlier today while I was traveling to the, I went to the border to see refugees earlier today, so I was on a plane, couldn't resolve it because my plane was late and I barely made it back. So I committed to him that that language still has to be figured out, but we'll work on it as my commitment to him and to you, if you want.
Sure. I just wanted to see if you were going to include that exemption. I'm not sure how you would do it after we adopt tonight and then come back.
Well, we would have to have red line language, and there would have to be sufficient copies and all that, and we just don't have the language, so we'd have to do some technical cleanup later, which won't be that hard.
Sure. Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that I understood what your plan was for that, and that sounds reasonable. Okay, so the last piece for me here is what to do with Title 17, which is important to me, and I would like to explain why, and I'd also like to just talk a little bit about what that means. So the Title 17, I'd like to do, I'd like to have the opportunity to vote on at this council, and while I won't speak for them, other than Councilmember Warren, who asked me to specifically say he would also like the opportunity to vote on that, I believe that Councilmembers Jennings and Carr, in my conversations with them, would also like the opportunity to vote on Title 17, obviously in addition to Title V. It would have to come back, because it wasn't on our agenda today. It doesn't have to go to planning again, because you guys already took care of that piece, but it would need to come back here, and folks would need to talk about which parts they like and don't like, and figure out if it works. But here's why. Because while this does, the Title V takes care of the Seoul request and the request to get rid of tobacco flavors like gummy bears and vanilla strawberry milk and fruity and yummy bear, which I think is very important, it does not do anything to restrict how close future tobacco retailers are to our schools and daycares, which is a really important element for me. And it does not give us, as council members, any say in helping address where tobacco retailers come. I represent a new growth area, so this is critically important for me, because they pop up. The CUP process, the conditional use permit process, is already a requirement for alcohol, for marijuana, for churches, for pet stores, for daycares, for drive-throughs, but not for tobacco, and I don't understand that. Neither the industry, the industry did not oppose it, and Seoul supported it as well. So I would really like to see us take up that vote, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but I think it deserves its day in front of this dais so that we can talk about it, and I think it adds something. And there have been some conversations that, you know, it creates a title that runs with the land and that that is nearly impossible to undo. Beau, would you mind coming up to the podium for a minute? Beau is a city attorney who does justice for neighbors' work, which means that when somebody becomes a bad actor in your community, and they've had a lot of criminal activity or code enforcement problems, that Beau and a police officer and code enforcement, like Jose, step in, and Carl, and they get engaged. The tobacco dealer that I told you about in my district started to have a problem, and Councilmember Hanson, this really gets to your point about how you can get rid of a license. I haven't had the chance to share the story, so my colleagues wouldn't even know it, because we can't all talk to each other until we get here. But would you mind running us through, just quickly, the scenario of the tobacco retailer and how we were able to void their license in about a six-month period, please?
Yes, certainly. Basic set of facts were, there was a lot of neighborhood complaints with this certain tobacco retailer location, primarily that they were selling to minors. The Sacramento Police Department and Code Enforcement North JFN team worked on doing an undercover operation, and sure enough, the retailer, it was a Seoul proprietorship, actually did sell tobacco to a minor decoy. So we ended up doing a suspension, and unfortunately, the way it turned out was the retailer continued to sell tobacco, basically would not recognize that his license was suspended. He kept selling it over and repeatedly. He did so many times that he actually ended up going through an actual revocation of that license.
And then what does that process look like? So he committed a violation, he was suspended, then he committed more violations while under suspension. All of that was in about a two-month period, and then what did the revocation process include? What happened next?
So usually when you get a penalty, you have a 20-day window to an appeal. You get that appeal hearing date. You go in front of the hearing examiner. So, because he did it so many times repeatedly, so he had this first hearing, and then in between that hearing and the next hearing, he kept violating. So it ended up, by the time you actually got into his second hearing, he was already at the stage of being revoked, because he had sold so many other times.
And the status of his license now?
It's revoked.
It's revoked. So the lesson here is you can revoke a license through the CUP process. The totality of time that it took for us to do that was about six months on a very bad actor, obviously, but here's my problem now. The folks that are there would like to reopen, right now they're just, they're selling non-tobacco products in that same location, and they're seeking a new tobacco license through somebody else, a friend, a relative, whatever. Without a CUP process, I don't have the ability to stop them. If there is a CUP process in place, they would have to apply again, and I would be able to say, "You are next door to a daycare, to daycare centers, and this is not an appropriate location for us to grant a license for retail here." So this is why I want us to come back and have a discussion around Title 17, so that we can take up this other piece that I think is critically important and missing, and quite frankly, the basis of my original request. When I sent this to Law and Legislation, I specifically asked for Title 17 review, and while Carl and Jose have done a great job, Tom is just now getting involved, and we spent much of today talking about what we could do. And it sounds to me like what we can do, based on the actions at Law and Ledge, or inaction at Law and Ledge on that particular piece, and the planning and design reviews vote on the item, is that we could, I can now ask separately from this vote, obviously, for this item to come to council, and then the council can take up.
May I? I'm talking to the maker of the motion, and again, this is not part of the motion, but I don't think there's any problem with bringing this back
Yeah, great.
...for a discussion to the city council.
That's great.
We'll just do it. Now, there may be, it's complicated legally in terms of these multiple processes, and I don't preordain what the outcome will be, but bring it back to the city council for discussion, and if you have proposed action, bring it here.
Yeah, I think that's great, and we can talk about it. Again, I just, it's an important piece for me that's sort of the other half of the equation of why I asked for this to begin with, so it's important. That being said, I really do want to thank everyone involved, Carl's team, planning team, Seoul, the retailers. I think you've made this better. I know it doesn't feel that way to you as you're sitting here now, but for the city of Sacramento, for kids, I think your participation and input has been helpful to all of us. I know it's been helpful to me. I've taken many meetings, and I really do think that the components that Councilmember Shenear has added, including coming back if there are state changes, will be important, and they will be adhered to by this council. Again, Councilmember Hanson, thank you for picking up the torch at Law and Ledge, and Councilmembers Gera and Harris and Shenear for shepherding it through Law and Ledge and getting it back to us so we could take a vote. Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. This is déjà vu all over again. We've gone through this process three full times in hearing. A lot of the same ideas have been brought forth each time. So I don't want to go through So I don't want to go through the whole litany again. I would also like to thank Kimberly and Twyla, the SOUL Collective and Mr. Gibbs as well for just shining light on a subject that really needed to be brought out in the open. You know, I'm, I'm just going to say a few things here, just a few, few facts. One is if, if the city takes action, it will actually probably move the state. So that's one thing that I see as positive here in trying to do this locally. As far as Council...
I'm sorry, I did that accidentally.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. You want to go home, right?
Lot of power, lot of power here, okay?
As far as Councilmember Ashby's comments, I would enjoy a, a conversation about making CUP a process that it's not a land use entitlement in perpetuity. So we'll see where we get with that. To Councilmember Carr, I would say that I don't see this as prohibition, I see it as a form of regulation. But here's the deal. Tobacco and tobacco products kill people. That's the bottom line. They, they take lives. People make profit off of selling these products, but they take lives. And I've said it before, it took my mother's life, it's taken several of my friends' lives from small cell cancer. And I was in fact, the hospice worker for my mom and was with her at her last breath. It's a very unpleasant way to die. You drown in your own plural fluid. It's not happy. Nicotine is a very addictive substance and we can argue about whether vaping drives kids to cigarette use or whether it takes people who have been lifelong smokers and makes their lives more healthy. But the fact of the matter is addictive substances create addicts and addictive behaviors translate to other ways to be an addict. This, this, there's an awful lot of evidence about that. You know, addiction in its, in and of itself is a very bad thing. There is a reason that vaping devices are disguised as pens and USB devices. There's a very strong reason for that and it's targeted marketing and it's trying to addict kids to nicotine. And in addition to that, the flavors, some of the flavors that Councilmember Ashby rattled off there, if that's not targeted marketing, well, I think you need a wake-up call. I'd like to thank Lori Comstock for just, just talking about some of the reality of how you lose people, how we've all lost people, you know, to tobacco product use. We all pay through this. We, we pay for this, we pay for tobacco use through our healthcare premiums. We all pay through the nose for healthcare in this country, if you're lucky enough to have it, because, not, not in a small extent, because of tobacco use. The burden that it puts on our healthcare system is enormous and we all pay for it every day. Nobody gets off free for this. You know, I, I'm not going to wax too much longer. I, I said at Law &amp; Ledge that these retailers, and I've been to a couple of shops, these are good people who know how to run a business and I believe that if they choose, they can sell other products that don't kill people. And they'll find a way. We discussed at Law &amp; Ledge delaying the implementation of this ordinance until the first of the year and I think that that's a very good thing. The last thing I want to say is as adults, we have the right to use products which will curtail our lifespan. You know, we do it every day, alcohol, you know, numerous substances that we all use, imbibe, smoke, whatever. But we have the right to make those choices as adults, but what we don't have is the right to allow our kids to be preyed upon by industries that cause them to become addicts and curtail their lives in ways that are absolutely devastating throughout their whole life. The idea of young teens, you know, even nine-year-olds being addicted to nicotine is just absolutely devastating to me and for all of these reasons, I'm definitely in support of this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just want to kind of be clear on the motion as far as the start of implementation to what I'm now hearing is January of 2020.
Correct.
So that's eight months from now, if that's correct. And I think we've been sensitive to the businesses and I've heard the number 42, so I'm going to assume that's the right number. I think we've been sensitive to the fact that...
Excuse me, the, the motion, the amended motion is to move the entire implementation, not just the 42 businesses, to January 1st.
So, but everybody would have eight months, is my point.
Yes.
And I, and I think my, my biggest concern for people who have been in business, and I don't know the history of all these businesses, but for people who have been in business and who have structured their business so that 85% of their business has been in this industry, are we giving them enough time to change their business model in, in order to continue to be in business and to pay the rents and the leases that they have? I'm, I'm concerned that we're not being as sensitive as we should be. And, and I don't know what that right time is, but I think the only thing I would be asking for is some extension to at least 12 months to, you know, whatever we felt was fair for those businesses because I, I would hate to think that we're now putting people out of business because we haven't given them time to be able to restructure their business. So I'm just, I'm, I guess I'm looking for direction from us that says, is eight months enough for them to totally change their business model and move? And do we, would we be in a position to do that ourselves?
I'd like the maker of the motion to answer first and Councilmember Gueda, Vice Mayor Gueda, anyone else?
I think the, so smoke shops and I guess my experience in my district, because I've seen a lot of the vape shops come and go, they tend to roll in a countertop and roll it out because they, they, they come in the night and they leave in the night and, and I don't know what they need because they haven't been active members of my community. They, the, the spaces they occupy are easily turned over a lot of times, but I think Councilmember Harris made a great point that they could choose to sell other things. We're not telling them they can't still use those spaces. I think eight months, considering that normally our ordinances take effect in 30 days, is very generous and Councilmember Chenier asking for additional data later this year to sort of assess that is another piece of information. If there's some state action, obviously we'll be back here in the fall to, to talk about what to do. I think, I think we've got enough wiggle room and opportunity to, to listen. I wouldn't be willing to extend past January 1st, Mr. Jennings, unless there are really compelling reason to, to do that and I, I don't think that we have one before us.
So that's assuming that the state action will happen between now and, and December and, and I understand that that's probably going to be the case and we may come back and look at it, but at that point in time, we're asking them to have completely changed their business model and to move into a different direction.
Well, I mean, maybe the way to reconcile it, Councilmember Jennings, maybe, is that if the state does pass some law here, as other members have said, we will know that certainly by October, in which case we would have the fall to look at the question of timing anew, depending upon what, what the state did. Councilman Gueda?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to reiterate part of what Councilmember Chenier had asked in the motion is that in that timeframe to come back in October, and, and I would ask our staff to work very closely with the retailers between now and October so that we can figure out where, what, you know, how, how this is playing out. I mean, like, like Councilmember Hanson mentioned, generally it's 30 days and that's the rule, but I think we're being sensitive to figure out how do we play this out. It's also not lost on me on the comments that Mr. Thatch brought up about some of the facilities and where they're located and they're the only places where people get fresh fruit. I mean, I, I think about Elder Creek Market over down in the south area and the Raj family, they're the only place in the area that offers fresh fruit, but they also, this is part of their, their, their product as well. So I think, you know, there's a lot that we're going to have to follow through, but I think the bold step of what we're trying to do is the important one today.
So, go ahead, Rick.
I just want to make sure I understand that we're going to be looking at these businesses between now and January.
Yes.
That will allow us to make sure that the health of their business is moving forward and we're not destroying these businesses.
You could revisit, we could revisit this in the fall based upon the surveys, based upon the changes, any potential changes in the state law. Yes, that's not a guarantee that it comes back to the City Council in the fall, but that would be the council's discretion and the ability to look at either changed circumstances or a compelling case that eight months versus 12 months would make a marked difference.
And I think that's why I would like it to be a part of the motion that it would come back because if we need to make that change for it to be eight months to 12 months, we could then consider it at that point in time.
Do you want it to come back for an affirmative vote one way or the other? You just want it to come back for a report back so that we can assess the stats? I think the latter would probably be okay.
That's exactly what I'm asking for.
Okay, so it's not a, it's not a vote, it's a back?
Report back? That's what we've done.
That's what we've done. That's, that's the survey that Councilmember Chenier asked for.
If I can't err. So Rick, I totally understand what you're saying. I think we'll have two opportunities to take a look at this. One is if the state passes legislation on this, we'll know if they've passed it, we'll know if the governor has signed it by the, by mid-October probably. So that's one opportunity that we can take, asking our staff to kind of track particularly these 42 businesses. As I said, I'm more concerned with those who probably are 85% or more of their businesses are these products. And I think that at that point, we can make a decision of, do we want to come back to the full council? But we can see where those businesses are and working with the industry and their leaders in the industry who can, I would hope, help us track that. So one way or another, there's the opportunity to bring it back to the council.
And could I clarify? Just because we're passing this doesn't shut those businesses down. Nothing in this shuts them down. It limits some of the products they can sell, but it does not shut them down. And as much as I am a believer in there's nothing like a deadline to focus the mind, January 1st is still eight months out. They have opportunity to continue their conversations and they've shown great effort and resources in communicating with us. We'll hear from them and, and I don't think that, that we're going to try to injure them, but at the same time, we're trying to do something for the community and if there's not a real deadline, then nobody's going to, is going to just keep getting pushed. And I...
Yeah, and I understand, I understand the deadline, I understand all of those things. What I want to do is make sure that we as a council are looking at those businesses. Small businesses are the heart of any city and I want to make sure that we're looking at those businesses and giving them every opportunity to be able to change their model and move into a more, again, a productive business. I just want to be sensitive to that. And I want to make sure it comes back either to this council.
No, I have an idea that may help. I would like maybe if the seconders willing, to have the Economic Development Department work with them on their transformation. If they're interested, that we make Economic Development staff available to help them with their business.
As long as it comes back here or to Law &amp; Ledge again, I'd, I'd be more than accepting of that.
Yes, that's part of the, that's part of the amended motion that Councilmember Chenier suggested in terms of the survey and the survey means a report back, either to Law &amp; Ledge or the council, so that we understand by fall what the, whether or not essentially they've been able to turn over this inventory as Councilmember Hanson described earlier. Is that okay? That's good? Okay. As Mayor of the city, I've not had a chance to really weigh in publicly on this and I've watched, obviously, the excellent work of the Law &amp; Ledge Committee and, and the primary author, I guess, so to speak of this, Councilmember Hanson, thank you so much for your leadership and Councilmember Chenier, all the members and everybody who's worked hard on these sets of issues over the last several years and Councilmember Ashby, it's, you know, these, these are hard subjects. I, I've listened really carefully and I am sorry that the retailers and the small businesses are caught in the middle here. I really am. Because I think we have to consider that impact. And yet I think I am most struck by the comments of both Councilmember Hanson and Vice Mayor Gueda distinguishing the fact that what is being sought to be banned here is the flavored product. This is an insidious product. I'm sorry. It's an insidious product. It is designed, unless you can convince me definitively, which I've reviewed the data and no testimony or, or research I've seen, that says that more people use this as a tobacco cessation, the flavored product is a tobacco cessation product, than the number of young people who actually start vaping, which leads to addiction. I mean, I have the Dartmouth study in front of me that was cited by one of the witnesses and I know these studies can go both ways, but they found that for every additional adult who quits smoking using e-cigarettes, there are 80 additional youth who initiate daily tobacco use through three cigarettes. And I know those studies can be debated, but you can't convince me that more people are quitting smoking using this product than the young people who are starting because it appears to be a bit of an epidemic on our school campuses. And here's the other distinction that I think my colleagues have made very well. Vaping is not being banned in the city here. And so if this is to be used as a tobacco cessation product, even in the absence of the FDA certifying it as a appropriate tobacco cessation product, if it is, why can't you use the non-flavored product as the medicine? I mean, medicine is not supposed to taste good. Yeah, Mary Poppins. No, I don't, I don't understand that. If that's the, if that's the, if, if it's a medicine, if you will, I kind of get the logic of it, why do you have to use the bubblegum flavor in order to try to quit, in order to try to quit smoking? And you know, I so appreciate Larry Carr, just the passion he brings to the City Council, even though we sometimes disagree. And he makes a very passionate argument and it, and it has some logic to it. Excuse me. What was that? What was that? I missed it, okay. You're damn, yeah, you are about to be damned with faint praise. Yes, you are. But I don't find your argument compelling, good sir, because, because Jeff Harris, Jeff Harris, I think, made the point and I just want to reiterate it. It is absolutely true that alcohol abuse can kill and that drug use, obviously marijuana use in excess can kill. But neither of those products, and especially alcohol, is by definition a product that kills. You don't see people calling a glass of wine a death glass. Tobacco, I'm sorry, is a death product. That's what it is. Now, not everybody dies, but are you kidding me? You talk about the decades-long history of the tobacco battle in this country and the lies and the way that the industries have used, the industry has used this product to hook generations after generations through various means? And this is another way to hook people. You really need bubblegum flavored tobacco, really? What great virtue is that serving in our Sacramento community? So it's a different product than alcohol and cannabis and yes, this is imperfect because it might be the best argument here on the other side is that you do have the black market and you do have the internet and you have all that. So you do what you can do. And again, you can't convince me that by eliminating over time, eight months, these flavored products, this insidious product off the shelves, that some young people, many young people are not going to start something that is going to, in the end, be bad for their health and their life expectancy. So it's hard because retailers, small business people yet are caught in the middle. But that's how I feel after listening to all this. Let's call...
Just want to clarify, did I hear you say alcohol does not kill?
No, I did not say that. I said alcohol used to abuse can kill. Of course it can. And alcohol, of course it can. But I'm saying that the, by definition, alcohol is not a death product. Tobacco, I'm sorry. Name a single... Tobacco, I'm sorry, name a single part of smoking in any form that is... That has any salutary health effect. Okay? That's so... I wasn't... Okay, fair enough. Okay, let's call the question. All in favor of the ordinance as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, that passes on a seven-to-one vote. Thank you all very much for your... There's nothing further to come before the City Council, Madam Clerk?
Okay, nothing.
We are adjourned.